Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Town of Grimsby Council to order. It's Monday, May 4th, and the time is 7:01. First off, the roll call. Councillor Bothwell.
Here.
Councillor Dunstall.
Here.
Councillor Frake.
Here.
Councillor Cadwell. Councillor Cadwell's here. Councillor Ritchie?
Here.
Councillor Ritchie's here. Councillor Sharp?
Here.
Councillor Vane?
Here.
Councillor Vardy?
Here.
And Regional Councillor Furtick?
Here, Mayor.
Great, and I'm here. Are there any disclosures of interest? Seeing and hearing none? Just prior to the start of the formal part of the council meeting this evening, I'd like to extend a few comments. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the fantastic and successful partnership demonstrated this Saturday to host our community food drive, Feed Hope. It was an amazing success. On behalf of council, I would like to thank GBF, Grimsby Fire, Grimsby Fire Volunteer Association, the town of Grimsby, and the thoughtfulness and compassion and generousness, generosity of all our residents in this great community to make that this Saturday such a successful event. We generated over 15,000 kilograms of food, which is a one-day record that has exceeded everything else. And very proud of everyone in town. And what a great feeling it was to be out there and see the community participating together. And a big shout-out goes to Stacy Elia at GBF, Steve Allingham, who organized everything with the fire department, Fire Chief Bill Thompson, and Director of Parks and Rec, Sarah Sweeney, and all the efforts that everyone did in planning this event. And finally, a thank you to all town councillors that were able to participate. Second, today is International Firefighters' Day. During these times, I wanted to thank all firefighters in volunteer fire and emergency response service for their extraordinary commitment to keep our community safe. Their dedication and service was clearly apparent on Saturday as well. Again, on behalf of council and the town, another big thank you to all the firefighters. Finally, due to the constantly evolving situation in these unprecedented times, an increased physical distancing bylaw has been removed from the agenda. The item was included based on a decision on information we had Thursday morning. EOC as a team made the decision as we were concerned about the warm weather coming, and even though we have had a great result getting compliance through education, we're concerned of some repeat offenders. This was meant as a last resort for the upcoming long weekend. However, on Friday, the announcement from the premier did loosen some of the lockdowns and gatherings, and thus made the bylaw outdated. Therefore, we decided to remove it. We are sorry for the confusion this may have caused. Up next, we have the adoption of the previous council minutes, now council meeting from April 20th, 2020. Need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councillor Vane. Seconded by Councillor Frake. Moved by Councillor Vane, seconded by Councillor Frake. Resolve that the minutes from the April 20th council meeting be approved. On favor? That's carried. Councillor Bothwell, it's a recorded vote.
Yay.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yay.
Councillor Frake? Councillor Frake?
Yay.
Councillor, yeah. Councillor Cadwell?
Yay.
Yay.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Councillor Vane?
Yay.
Councillor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, yay, so that is carried. Up next, we have Report FCR 20-05, a bylaw to prohibit and regulate the sale and use of fireworks and pyrotechnic special effects. Do we have the speaker on that or not? Chief Thompson's going to speak on that. Chief Thompson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Just a brief overview. I provided everything in the report. It's basically cleaning up our old bylaw of 92, back in 1992. This new bylaw meets the legislative requirements. Even our old bylaw described family fireworks as display fireworks. Well, in the report, you see there's three different types of fireworks out there between consumer, I'm sorry, consumer display and special effects fireworks. So this was mainly housekeeping, and another portion to it allows us the ability to have a permit in place instead of the hawkers peddler's permit that they all get. And then the hawkers peddler permit has a mechanism that the fire has to go out and do an inspection. So this cleans it up. It's just a one-stop shop now. They come to the fire department, they get their permit, and it includes the inspection. So I'm ready for any questions.
Any questions, council? Councillor Bothwell?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. I noticed that Palom also passed a very similar bylaw, and I just wondered, part of, the bylaw itself is very comprehensive and it's great. I just wondered how you're going to communicate the ban on fireworks or the suspension during the emergency period. They've done like a media release and they're going to post on their website because I understand you don't have to do a separate bylaw that bans it for this period, and you can just communicate that somehow? Can you explain how you're going to communicate to people that fireworks are banned and the sale of them as well as the use of consumer fireworks?
So, to be clear, the fireworks sale has been banned. So prior to doing this, we met with the Kinsman Club, since this is their largest fundraiser, to see what they were doing. And the Kinsmen made it very clear that they had stopped their process a month before we even came to them. So they will not be setting up their trailer. And then we proactively went around to each six or seven of our businesses that do sell them, and six of the seven were not buying fireworks this year. So our goal is to control the sale of them. To stop consumer fireworks on Victoria Day is virtually impossible. As you know, they can buy their fireworks from out of town online. They bring them home from last year. So we are still going to see the calls come out, but I do not see a direct ban. And if we did it, it would be communicated through our social media and in the newspaper. That's the best we can do. But at this time, I don't see, we're going to ask Consumer Fire, the homeowner, to be careful, but we're not going to be able to stop them. We just know that.
Thanks. Can I just ask one other question to that? Thank you very much. When, I think part of the bylaw states there's that you can charge people for a nuisance deployment call if you have, if you're called out because of a complaint. And I think I read in there that it's like $775 in our fee schedule for a nuisance deployment. Is that correct?
So that's also in our E and R bylaw, and it established the fees for the consolidated fees that we came up with. And that is a cost of a fire truck. But in this bylaw for fireworks, we really have to validate it. And it's more about public education, as I said in my report. We want to ensure the person knows we will not be charging. But if you end up going back to the same residence two, three times for complaints, it's not fair to the rest of the taxpayers that they should absorb the cost of all the fire trucks going.
Thank you, Councillor Bothwell, and thank you, Chief. Councillor Sharp, you had a question?
Mayor Jordan, and question through you to the fire chief is, so a lot of the bylaw that we're passing right now looks similar to our previous bylaw. And that was that fireworks are normally allowed on the week of Victoria Day and on the week of Canada Day. And otherwise, fireworks are generally not allowed. And is that correct?
Through you, Mayor, that it would be correct, Councillor Sharp, but the fire chief has the authority in this bylaw as other times as permitted by the chief fire official. So as you know, as society is changing and other backgrounds, we do have to respect some of their holidays. We may have opportunities to take advantage of that as a council.
So we could, we, a resident could, if they were having a birthday party for like, say they're having a 60th or 50th or 30th birthday party, if they wanted to light fireworks, just a regular consumer type, could they contact the fire department and ask for permission to do that?
For consumer fireworks, we probably wouldn't allow that on a day-to-day basis like that. That would become overwhelming. But there is public fire displays. There's experts out in the field that we do allow that. And sometimes you do see that above your house, if I'm not mistaken, across.
Yeah, sometimes you see it up the mountain.
That is an owner that goes through a professional service. So we do offer permits that way.
Okay. So then this year, on Victoria Day, are we allowing fireworks?
Consumer fireworks are going to be allowed unless the EOC does stop them. What we have controlled is the sale of them in our municipality. As a fire chief, acting fire chief, I'll be honest, I've never been a fan of fireworks, as I've been to a structure fire, and we lost a house due to a firework. And they can be a problem. And as you know, the densities in Grimsby are really tight now to put off fireworks. It becomes challenging. So we are not going to stop them unless the emergency management team decides at this point, we are going to put up social media and we are going to come to a decision that we need to ban them.
Okay, thank you very much. That was all my question.
Any further questions? Councillor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Jordan. Through you to the chief. What is the legal age to purchase fireworks, chief? Just for a bit of an FYI for everybody?
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Cadwell, it's 18.
18? Okay, great. Yeah, thank you.
Seeing no further questions. I just need a mover and seconder for this. Moved by Councillor Sharp, seconded by Councillor Vane. Moved by Councillor Sharp, seconded by Councillor Vane. Resolve that Report FCR 20-05 be received and that bylaw 20-41 being a bylaw to prohibit and regulate the sale and use of fireworks and pyrotechnic special effects within the town of Grimsby be approved. On favor?
Yay.
Recorded vote. So Councillor Bothwell's a yay. Councillor Dunstall?
Yay.
Councillor Dunstall, yay. Councillor Frake?
Yay.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yay.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Councillor Vane?
Yay.
Councillor Vardy? Councillor Vardy's a yay. And myself, a yay. So that is carried. Up next, we have Report FCR 20-06, Grimsby Fire Department Establishing and Regulating Bylaw. Chief Thompson?
Yes, Your Worship. Council, this is the housecleaning that, this was the bylaw that was repealed back in July of 219. And working with the CEO, this is basically housecleaning. And as you know, in E and R bylaw is the tool from which our council formally establishes its fire department, sets our service levels, and decides on the services that are deemed necessary to our needs and circumstances in our community. So I'm open for any questions, Your Worship.
Questions? Councillor Frake?
You hear me? You hear me all right? Okay. Just curious, what are the big differences between the old bylaw and this one? I mean, don't go into great detail, but just general, what's the big difference?
I believe what I had stated, sorry, through you, Mayor, Councillor Frake, what I had stated in there, I believe the biggest ones you'll see is the communication process. I now will report through the CEO for operations and administration, and our services. You'll see that they are defined. It's, this is the template. This is the template used by the province. It's in the essential guides that all councillors attend the provincial seminar. This is the exact template, and the services levels in there are really defined well. And as I said in the report, it works towards our capital asset management program that if we do auto-education, we also do NFPA training to a certain level. We also have equipment to a certain level. So that's all defined in this bylaw now that really will help towards managing the fire department in the future for capital asset management, and also limit the liability, possible liability to the municipality.
So sort of follow-up, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind? You mentioned that the major difference is the communications piece. How different how? I mean, how did you communicate before versus what it will?
Through you, Mayor. In the past, we used to report on many different levels. It could have been through the finance department and other departments, and even the CEO of the day. But this time, this time, it's established in the E and R bylaw, which will ensure the fire chief knows his reporting structure.
And that's the way the province has gone as well?
There is several fire departments across the province that have this in their model, from Port Colbrun to other area municipalities. But they all, all fire chiefs that I know of do report through their CEO.
Okay. Just want to clarify that. Thanks. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing no further, oh, Councillor Bothwell, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just a quick question. If the fire chief could explain the difference between automatic aid and mutual aid, and who do we have an automatic aid agreement with right now?
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Bothwell, automatic aid is, we have agreements, there's a fire protection agreement, automatic aid. They're very, they're very similar. Some come with fees and charges. West Lincoln has that with Palom, but fortunately, we don't have that with Lincoln. And West Lincoln, we have what's called a fire protection agreement that our services go to theirs, and they come to us when needed. Like, we had a call at the hospital the other night. They sent their aero trucks this way. So automatically, they're dispatched. So if the call comes in, their fire department is dispatched automatically by our communication center to respond to what criteria we've put into their system, like our high rises and mid-rises out in the West End. Where mutual aid is a different plan that you have an agreement with somebody, and if you're, if you're needed, they'll call upon you. So we're all part of a mutual aid program in the province, even though Niagara has a mutual aid program too. We have a fire coordinator. So when there's a big event, the regional coordinator may call upon other departments for mutual aid and call in their apparatus or equipment. Does that help you?
It does. Is there any cost to us on the automatic aid agreements?
So currently, the only automatic aid we have is with Hamilton. There is no cost. The other with Lincoln and West Lincoln is fire protection agreements, and there is no cost to that. We just monitor yearly to see how many times we respond to each municipality and what they've given back to us.
Thank you.
You got a birdie.
Councillor Cadwell?
Hello? Yeah, hi there. Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and thanks for the report, chief. Again, people, if they're not aware, our operating, the fire department operating budget is around $3.3 million. So it's a, it's a big chunk of the taxpayers' dollars. Great service that the GFD does, the GFD has offered to the community. And I like the automatic aid, chief, because from a dispatcher which comes out of St. Catherine's, you know, you guys, they know based on your call what's going to be running with you. Where from what I used to recall when I was with Grimsby, was the, with the mutual aid, that was sometimes a decision of the chief at the call. Chief, is that, can you maybe clarify that? It's automatic aid is great, though. Thanks.
But, Your Worship, I'm sorry, that was broken up there with Councillor Cadwell near the end, something about mutual aid?
Yeah. Councillor Cadwell, can you just maybe repeat? Thanks.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to, Mayor. Yeah. Yeah. I'm just saying with the, the automatic aid, when it's, when the call is dispatched from the dispatch center, that's when the, the other municipality trucks will be, as the chief said, ladder trucks, probably tanker trucks if they're needed. They go with that call, where I'm just going to reflect in the past, where the mutual aid was maybe a decision that was, a call that was made at the time when they were at the call, you know, the call's pretty big, we need help. So if the chief can just, you know, I think it's a great, great service that we have. Thank you.
Yes, through you, Mayor. You're correct, councillor. As I said earlier, mutual aid, if I didn't clarify, is an instant commander on scene who's in charge of the scene may request different apparatus for assistance. So knowing the community or dispatch center, he'll just call out first, say he needs tankers, pumppers, whatever he requires. And so they're reaching out to the dispatch center instead of automatically being dispatched as an automatic aid. Hope that helped.
Thank you. Councillor Dunstall's up next.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to our acting fire chief. I'm looking at the organizational chart, and I'm just kind of curious, because when I was on the last term of council, I think the objective was, was for 40 volunteer firefighters to go to 56. And if this organizational chart is current, it looks like we have 42. And the last time I think I asked this very same question, I think we were losing our volunteer firefighters through attrition. They're just getting too old to be a firefighter. And I don't know, are we keeping up with it? Just an overview of where we stand and where we're going, especially with the growth in the West End over the last four or five years. It's, I just wondered. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Dunstall, I'm looking at the Schedule A right now, and at the bottom, it highlights 56 volunteers, which was approved in, I believe, 217, 260.
Okay, sorry. I was looking at the little boxes. It said 11, 11, 10, and 10, which is 42.
Okay. And then, then there's two acting captains, and then captain, and it all adds up.
Okay, all right. Well, so we're up to 56. Very good.
Correct, we are.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, seeing no further questions. Just need a mover and seconder for this. Councillor Frake and Councillor Cadwell? Moved by Councillor Frake, seconded by Councillor Cadwell. Resolve that Report FCR 20-06 be received and that bylaw 20-42, Grimsby Fire Department Establishing and Regulating Bylaw, be approved and enacted by council. Our recorded vote, Councillor Bothwell?
Yay.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yay.
Councillor Frake?
Yay.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yay.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Councillor Vane?
Yay.
Councillor Vardy?
Uh, yay.
And myself, a yay, so that is carried. Up next, we have Report DPW 20-12, Approval of Site Alteration Bylaw. I'll just get a mover and seconder on this right now, and then we'll start discussion. Moved by Councillor Vane, seconded by Councillor Ritchie. Brandon, you will bring us in on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is our second report bringing forward this year. The earlier report was the draft of the bylaw. Beyond that period, we put the draft bylaw out for public consultation for a period of about 30 days, from February 17th to March 18th. It was posted on our website and the newspaper, and we did receive some comments back, which we had reviewed and amended the bylaw accordingly. Essentially, we're asking for your approval of the new bylaw, and it will come into force June 1st, 2020, which is the day after the existing moratorium was supposed to end. And be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Brandon. Questions, council? Seeing no questions. Oh, Councillor Bothwell, sorry. And then Councillor Vardy?
I don't want to, I don't want to step on you there, Councillor Vardy, if you were first. Okay. So I appreciate all the, I had some back and forth with Brandon on this already, just to clarify some, some questions that I had, and I appreciate that. I think that I'm just still a little bit, I like that we're, we've moved to a model that I think is, is sort of a maiden Grimsby. It's made in West Lincoln, but it's kind of adapted to Grimsby, which is good. And they've had some experience. I understood you've sat with them and in-depth got a feel as to how it's working for West Lincoln. But I'm just a little concerned that some of the portions, some of the couple sections, the one that the owner just has to attest on paper to the source and nature of the fill, but has, I think they have to provide an engineer statement upon initial approval. I'm just thinking that we're, you know, our due diligence to do testing of the soil at the time it's finally graded and before we release the security deposit, if there's an option to do that, I think that the concern I have is, is there's always a potential for contamination. There have been cases where I think in Grimsby, we've had to deal with that. And I'm concerned that if a landowner does a massive fill job, sells and moves on, is the, the air property owner going to be liable or responsible in the event that contamination runs into a creek or an abutting property, and we find that there is heavy metals, whatever? So how, you know, who, although the wording in the bylaw tries to absolve the town of all liability, and saying the owner will find out on that, I just, you know, is there weight to that? Have legal actually say that they can't come back and get us? Just because I've seen so many cases on Canley that it does come back to the town. So I just want to ensure that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's on this one, with, that there is no chance of liability coming back to the town on a potential contamination site, and that perhaps if it could be registered on title, that this type of permit or whatever was done, and that should the, should it change hands, that the responsibility for any liability of potential contamination runs with the property? I don't know. Is there any way we can, we can tighten that up, is my first question. And then my second is just safety and concern about, we know the problem with truck traffic, and the people in the communities are tired of it. And I just want to ensure that we've done everything we can to manage those haul routes, to try to give these people some respite and some, so that can lessen their concern about the safety of their families and children in those areas. Thank you.
So just, I guess, to speak to your first question first, just in terms of the safety. So there are a number of conditions in the bylaw that specifically speak to fill testing through the MOE standards. So So uh, you know, essentially before the contractor or homeowner, property owner would be able to bring in any material. Uh, they'd have to make sure that material is certified from the uh, source site uh, before it's brought into the uh, receiving site. So in terms of uh, tightening up the uh, in terms of the, I guess your question was about how do we tie that to the property owner? Um, presently, again, we in the bylaw, we talk about an indemnification clause. So essentially, the owner is indemnifying the town from any liability associated with any potential um, uh, caused, uh, any any potential issues caused through the um, uh, any sources of contamination. Uh, any uh, drainage issues, anything like that. Um, that doesn't mean that, uh, you know, we wouldn't have the protocols in place to prevent that in the first place. So um, and and hopefully that answers your question with respect to that. And in terms of the haul routes, again, we've outlined in the in the bylaw, um, that there will be, uh, we have the jurisdiction to identify appropriate haul routes. Um, in the case of um, what we'd be looking at when we're establishing those routes is essentially the uh, higher traffic roads uh, that are suitable for uh, maintaining or or managing um, uh, the heavier vehicles uh, would be used. And in particular, you know, a lot of the fill is occurring up on the escarpment. So right now in Grimsby, the only uh, true access is through Mountain Road. Um, and from there, uh, the essentially the uh, traffic would uh, branch off to the respective uh, uh, receiving sites. Uh, that still gives us the opportunity to identify where um, we feel that the traffic would be off of Mountain Road or um, better suited uh, to get to a certain site. So um, for example, if uh, if they had to go uh, over on Park Road or something like that. Uh, we could direct them through up mountain, uh, over Mud Street and then down Park Road. Uh, rather than taking a shortcut through one of the side side streets. So that would be kind of our thinking when we are looking at the haul routes in advance.
I'm sorry, what's that's one more quick question, so I appreciate that. I I just, we haven't vetted this by our legal, have we?
No, again, so as I explained to you this morning, uh, so uh, my understanding is this was vetted through West Lincoln's legal team. Uh, we received direction to follow this bylaw, uh, from our follow the uh, the document from West Lincoln. So we're on the understanding that uh, it was appropriately vetted. Uh, so again, the changes that we've uh, made to the bylaw, we didn't feel were significant enough to uh, get them vetted. If that's council's direction to have that reviewed by legal team, then we can do that.
And and I'm just gonna add, if we can maybe put that motion together, because I I would like to say that um, um, although I hear that, you know, we can trust that West Lincoln did their due diligence, I think as a town, we need to do ours as well. And I am really concerned that if um, an uh, a landowner turns around and sells and then jumps the country that the new landowner may not be aware of what has transpired in the property and we have no controls over how to then um, uh, enforce an issue that might may come forward. I just want to be reassured that um, the there's the all those liabilities and indemnification wordings that are in the bylaw are actually enforceable and um, and do protect the town. So if it means that we defer this just till May twentieth, is that possible, Brandon? Um, just to have that quick legal vetting of the indemnity clauses is my main concern. Um, and the town's liability in the potential case of a contamination, is that gonna ju- that shouldn't jeopardize the June first date? If we can get this through council and have it the reassurance um, at the next meeting, is that possible?
Uh, thank you through Mr. Mayor. Uh, so obviously, I'd have to check with our legal team to find out if that's something they can turn around uh, in in that timeframe. Um, if it's just a matter of looking at the bylaw and then saying, giving their endorsement, uh, can't see that being an issue. Uh, we do have some time in terms of the the June first uh, kind of left date. So um, we we can work towards that if that's council's direction.
If you just draft that, Sarah, that would be great, because I think I'd like to see that deferral as a motion. Thank you.
Great, uh, up next, we have um, Counselor Vardy.
Sorry, guys, um, uh, just a couple of things, Brandon. Um, I'd like to see in the bylaw a notification of everyone along the route. So it's not just the people that are living, you know, I know you've got something there within so many meters of of the property, people being notified, but I really think it has to be everyone along the route should be notified of what's um, you know, of of a a potential approval. The other thing that I'd like to see is that we could have a number happening, a number of um, permits perhaps happening at the same time. Using the same route or going, you know, in like we've had on Kemp Road, we've had several on Kemp. And you know, it puts quite a quite a strain, puts quite a strain on everybody living on Mountain Road, right? Because all the trucks are going up there and it's not really providing them any, you know, any uh, relief or comfort or safety. And they're exposed to, you know, all like increased um, you know, truck fumes and bad air and dust and what have you. Um, so I'm wondering if it's possible that somehow we can write in there that we have the ability to perhaps um, stagger some of these, um, you know, or limit the number that are happening along the same route at the same time.
Thank you through through you, Mr. Mayor, the first question I'll deal with first. Uh, um, so just in terms of notification of everyone along the route, that would be uh, could be very difficult, depending on how long the route is. Are we talking about, um, you know, every, like, again, if we're going to the example of, um, you know, someone coming from our our West End uh, development uh, and bringing fill up to the um, up to the escarpment, you're talking about, you know, people along uh, Casablanca on Mountain, all the way up Mountain, um, over to wherever the wherever the location is. Um, so that that could be difficult. Um, the couple of the things that we did put in the bylaw to try to uh, address uh, communicating to uh, the the people in the in the area of the actual receiving site where specifically, um, you know, the the notification of any abutting property owner within a hundred and twenty meters. Um, the other one was, um, I lost my train of thought there. Um, we also are doing for greater than a thousand cubic meters. So for the larger operations, it it is subject to a uh, a public meeting. So again, there will be an opportunity to uh, that that gets be communicated and people have an opportunity to uh, voice their concerns at that point. Uh, and the other thing uh, I wanted to mention too was the placard. So again, at the receiving site, they are now required to post a placard or a sign uh, at their site uh, and indicating that they've had a an application that's being made. Uh, again, that'd be some something similar to what we do through the the Planning Act in terms of zoning bylaws and changes and stuff like that, so. Um, uh, the second question, number of trucks using the same road. Again, I I'd like to think that if we had two applications on the same uh, property or same area. Uh, we could look at uh, how we could um, maybe direct those through different directions. I'm not sure, uh, we could look at uh, you know, how how we could uh, prevent that might be difficult in terms of uh, limiting the number of trucks. Uh, other than um, looking at the application itself and and making sure that, you know, what they're proposing is uh, to a betterment of the land, so.
Um, if if we could consider perhaps posting something in the in the local newspaper uh, as one potential way to inform more people that this is, this is happening. Uh, also our website, which I think you've already thought of. And my only other concern is a hundred and twenty meters. Um, it's farmland up there and I'm not sure that that's even going to get to some neighbors. Uh, you might have a better idea than me, but you know, that's only about three hundred feet and a lot of those farms are more than three hundred feet apart.
So it's a hundred and twenty meters from the limits of the property line. So any anyone within that uh, hundred, hundred and twenty meter radius of the limits of the property line. So if it's a big property, it has a bigger area.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Sharp.
For my first question, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Um, so is has there been, is there a motion to for legal or or is that, is there a motion for, has there been any motion made for that? And my question with regard to that, so I I wouldn't support this going to our legal department. Um, it's a bylaw, that's it's it's we're copying it from West Lincoln's bylaw. And our legal fees have been getting really high and we're we're taking these second opinions on on bylaws that have already been vetted. And bylaws that it seems like our town staff are okay with. And so um, I I don't want to spend too much money on on legal opinions if if they're not needed. And so if, Brandon, if you could give me um, your opinion on that. And Sarah, do we have a a motion or have you drafted something?
Uh, well, it we we can go two ways on this. If Counselor Vane wants a friendly amendment or if we have a vote on a separate uh, um, motion to be amended.
So.
I'm okay with a friendly amendment.
But who, I'm, I I'm, what I'm saying is that I don't support sending this to our legal team unless it's recommended by Brandon. What's your thoughts on that?
Again, it's just like, um, my understanding again is that West Lincoln vetted this through their legal team. Uh, the bylaw is uh, almost identical. Again, we made tweaks here or there, um, you know, in terms of the the questions about the indemnification. That language is strictly from uh, West Lincoln's bylaw. Um, so again, I I don't feel the changes that we've made were significant enough uh, to warrant that. But again, I I'm willing to take the direction from council and if if that's the purview of council to um, to have it vetted again. I'm fully willing.
So um, like I was saying, uh, I don't know the exact costs of these legal things, but I'm sure it's in the neighborhood of five hundred dollars an hour. And and these guys will spend time reviewing, reading, um, I don't, I can't presume to know how much. But if it's not required, I I wouldn't support sending this to for further legal advice. Um, I do have some other questions, though, directed to Brandon. And I I like, um, in the definitions, it talks about commercial fill operation. And um, and it describes it as like an operation where they're accepting money for for fill. And um, I think that that's well defined. And it, but it says in part four, section eight, that commercial fill operation will not be allowed within the town. So is this intended not to allow residents to accept money for fill?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Um, there are a number of uh, areas in in the bylaw. The general, I guess, uh, prohibitions to the bylaw is um, is is you cannot bring in fill unless the quantity of the soil is suitable for the betterment of the receiving land. That's the key, the key uh, term there, betterment of the land. So um, someone uh, building a ten foot high uh, elevation to their, our land is not a betterment to the land. So um, so the commercial fill operation is one control. And the uh, the key phrase in terms of uh, betterment of the land is is another one of the controls as well.
Yeah, so that's that's great. And I remember reading this when we were drafting our first version. And um, it says here that commercial fill operation means removable placing, dumping of fill, where remuneration is paid or other compensation to the owner of the land, whether or not the remuneration or consideration to the owner is the sole reason for removal, placing or dumping. So I think a lot of the problem that we've had is, I've heard from a lot of residents that are saying these guys are getting a hundred and fifty dollars a load or fifty dollars a load and they're accepting two thousand loads. And it's a hundred thousand dollars to just fill their sites. And so if uh, if the way this is defined, it sounds like that it's not going to allow that. Or are we going to require some kind of affidavit or some, will the property owner as part of this permit have to sign that they are not accepting cash for fill? Or how will, and how will we enforce that?
So yes, again, through you, Mr. Mayor, there's there's an application form that the uh, proponent has to fill out and they have to identify the purpose for the fill. Um, I'm not sure that there's a checkbox that says I'm not a commercial fill operation, but I can verify that. Um, again, the the key uh, here is um, they have to be able to prove to us that uh, within reason that the works that they're proposing are bettering their land. Uh, you know, they're filling in low spots or they're or moving material around to make the the land more uh, conducive to agricultural practices and stuff like that. So for someone just to say, you know, I'm I'm my, I I'm bringing in fill and building up my land just for the sake of building it up. Whether there's money passed uh, back and forth or not, uh, it under the the conditions of the bylaw, it wouldn't be permitted.
So the way I read this, it says that it's not allowed whether or not it is the sole reason for the fill. So if a if a property owner is is building up their land for purpose of betterment of the land. Can they also get paid to accept that fill?
Uh, I I would say yes, because again, it's not a, to me, that's not a commercial fill operation. A commercial fill operation is the true intent of bringing in that material is to make money or to provide a a dump site, for a lack of a better word, for that material. Um, uh, so could there be a situation where a person has a low area, a low lying area? Or uh, they want to flatten out their land and they work in agreement with a developer to deposit material uh, there and they are paid for that. Uh, I think that is fair and that that could happen. But again, under the conditions of the bylaw, they'd have to make sure that uh, it is a true betterment of the land. It is truly going to improve the the situation and not things work, not make things worse. And again, they're not strictly or essentially a building, building layer upon layer and and building a mountain out there and receiving money for it. So I think that's the uh, the governing factor that we're kind of looking towards. Hopefully that is.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's the way this definition is, could you, you have the bylaw with you?
Yeah.
So we're looking at uh, definitions, it's letter C, commercial fill operation. Means the removal, placing or dumping of fill involving remuneration paid or other compensation to any owner of land. Whether or not the remuneration or consideration to the owner is the sole reason for removal, placing or dumping of fill. So it sounds like if they are accepting remuneration or some form of consideration, regardless of whether it is the reason why they're taking the fill. And so and then later in part four, it says that in section eight of part four, it says that commercial fill operation will not be allowed in the town.
Correct.
So the way I read it is that the owner could not accept remuneration or any other form of of consideration.
So again, the the way I look at that and and maybe my interpretation is incorrect here. But the way I look at that, uh, again, I'm I'm applying uh, the general requirement for um, betterment of the land over top the commercial fill operation. So again, if if that's uh, something I can uh, look at more further and and make sure that that definition is clear, then I can certainly do that.
Yeah, maybe we can edit that definition to say, in whatever way to say that if the um, that they can't accept remuneration, but not for the sole purpose of or just the way I read it, it's it sounds like that even if they're accepting, even if they're bringing it for another purpose, like to to raise or remediate the land, that they can't accept. And then I'd like to see us enforce it, that if these guys are just taking cash for. just taking cash for fill, that we should have them sign to say that they aren't. And then we should we should stop them if they are.
Again, that that is something we can look into that may be difficult to prove. I know there was some questions raised about whether or not we could receive a copy of any agreement between those parties. And again, that to me, that's confidential information, and I don't think we would have the opportunity to have access to that information or request that information. But again, under under the the way I'm looking at this, the other conditions of the bylaw, regardless of what the whether money is passing hands or not, the other conditions of the bylaw protect the intent of making sure that the land is made better, not strictly done for commercial reasons.
Okay, and then maybe if we could ask them to sign, like they could make a statement saying, I am not doing this, or they could make a statement saying, I am accepting cash for this. And we could ask that them to to notarize that or and then in the future, we we just, we have another card to play that if they if if it's our rule, then we should ask them to to agree to it.
Yeah, again, I can I can look at the wording of our our specific agreement and where they sign, and I can make sure that 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 is identified in there. I just, I I'd have to look through it again just to make sure that is clearly laid out. And I can certainly get back to you with that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe that's a good reason to defer it to the next council meeting, so we can get that cleared up. Counselor Frick, you're up next.
Brandon, you hear me okay?
Yep.
Sorry, I got a, something just came up on my screen here. I I hear what you're saying about, you know, the fact that we've, Lincoln has taken steps to look at their bylaw, legal steps. But you know, even though there is some differences maybe between ours and theirs, I think it'd be very wise and and very prudent of us, we did seek some legal counsel. It only takes a line or two in any of these documents to make it go all wrong. And we just experienced that in the last few days with this 2046 bylaw. Maybe that should have gone to legal. But I I I think I go along with with Counselor Bothwell. Maybe it's going to cost us some money now, but it might save us some money later. I don't know how simple these differences are. But I think this has to be our bylaw, and if it's our bylaw, we should have our legal counsel look at this and ensure that it is. In fact, every line of that of that bylaw is 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 looked at, and it applies to Grimsby in every way, shape, or form. And, you know, I I'll do respect, Brandon, I trust you very much, and I I know you're, you know, you know these things better than I do. But I think in the best interest of of us and as a council, and for legal reasons, I think we should just have it looked at by our legal counsel to be safe. Because, as I said, a couple of lines wrong in a bylaw can make the whole thing go wrong. Anyway, I I will go along with Counselor Bothwell on on that remark. I I know we may defer, but anyways, that's that's fine, too sensible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any counselors want to speak for a first time, or if not? Oh, Counselor Cadwell, I see your hand up.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I thought, Brandon, it's a very good report. Just got a couple questions and then a comment. Where I'm concerned is the is the $10,000 damage deposit. Is that is that going to be enough to cover any damages that are done to the roads, maybe culverts? I'm just thinking about, and you and I have had discussions on 88 Elm Tree Road East, where the new house is being built. The been up there many times, taking pictures. The road itself from the cemetery entrance to the new construction, constructed home, it's trashed. The South Lane is trashed. It really is. And and I appreciate, Brandon, you and I have been communicating on that, and your response has been very good, too. So that's why I'm just wondering if the if the $10,000 damage deposits is enough, because we also run into half-load season up on these rural roads. When you get these large trucks hauling hauling their their fill to the different sites and that, as as we've witnessed again on the Elm Tree Road East. So yeah, that that's one comment I would just be, I'd like to throw out if, again, if the $10,000 is sufficient. So if you want to comment, then I just got a couple of quick things to bear through for Brandon. Thank you.
Sure, thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. The 10,000 is a minimum deposit. So that's the absolute minimum we request for road deposit. So again, based on the haul route, we would have to evaluate how many roads that are rural in nature, surface-treated, that aren't maybe as durable as the higher traffic roads, like roads, like whether it's the regional roads or or the higher traffic roads. So again, when we review that and and make the determination, then is that $10,000 reasonable for to protect us if if there's damage? On top of that, there there is also, we we can, we have discretion to establish a a letter of credit for all the site works on the private property as well. So again, all that money can be lumped together and be used as as a security should either the damaged road get damaged or there be an issue on private property. So again, there's a number of mechanisms to ensure that we're protected and and that the road is protected.
That's that's great, Brandon. You've done your homework there. I really appreciate that. Thank you. The other, just a comment, I'm really glad to see that you've got the hauling route in there, which is going to be very helpful, too. It's very, it's unfortunate that Grimsby Mountain Road is the only local truck access point in Grimsby, Hamilton, nothing. Victoria Avenue, I'm not 100% sure on that, but I know there's a lot of trucks up and down there. So that's great that you that you incorporated that. Also, the public meeting, when the the site exceeds over 1,000 cubic meters, it's great to have the public involved, Brandon, and I thank you for that, too, that, you know, we can have some good input from the public, too. So I I think you've done a great job, good report. I know there's a few little more things that probably can be tweaked, we can look into for a Grimsby-made site alteration. But thank you very much.
Counselor Bothwell.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. Just one quick other comment. I noticed that the first offense charge has gone up from 5,000 to 10,000, and the second offense to 25,000 for individuals, I think it is. So that's it's a good penalty for people, but I mean, it's still, we don't want those things to happen. So I think again, I'm just going to stress my concern about environmental impacts. And the experience of something like that can be so I think doing, deferring for that legal wording on indemnification can, you know, instead of getting into a $10 million lawsuit, we can spend $1,500 or $2,500 now and just have them look at that wording. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'll read the amended report or resolution moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that report DPW 20-12 dated May 4, 2020 be received and that the enclosed site alteration bylaw and the recommendations made in this report be received by legal counsel. All in favor? And oh, sorry. Oh, I have to read the rest, sorry. Pardon me? Oh, sorry. Yeah, reviewed by legal counsel, not received.
And and brought back to the May 20 meeting, because we have a deadline to meet.
Yeah. And so, yeah, brought back to the May 19 meeting. I'll read it again.
20th, because I think it's the Tuesday following the long weekend or whatever, right?
Yeah, which is, I think it's the 19th.
Point of order.
Yes, Counselor Ritchie.
Um, does the mover and seconder both have to agree to that friendly amendment?
Just the mover, right? Just 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 the mover is needed. I'll read it again. Resolve by or move by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that report DPW 20-12 dated May 4, 2020 be received and that the enclosed site alteration bylaw and the recommendations made in the report be received by legal counsel and brought back for our May 19 meeting. Counselor Bothwell.
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall.
Yay.
Counselor Frick. Counselor Frick.
Yay.
Point of order. Mr. Mayor, you said received, and I think you meant to say reviewed.
Reviewed.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's
Yeah, it's reviewed's written. So it's it's because it's a handwritten friendly amendment, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yep. Counselor Cadwell. Counselor Cadwell's yay. Counselor Ritchie? Okay.
Nay.
Counselor Ritchie's yay.
My counselor's nay.
Nay, sorry. Counselor Vane.
You skipped Counselor Sharp, but I'm a nay.
All right, sorry, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Sharp is a nay. Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy is a yay, and myself, that's a yay, so that is carried. Up next, we have report Finance 20-06, 2020 Tax Levy and Tax Rates. Stephen, our treasurer, welcome. Stephen, you're muted still.
Sorry. Thank you. So on March 3, Town Council approved the 2020 budget, which established the 2020 tax levy. Also, a couple of weeks ago, Regional Council approved the 2020 tax policy, which includes the regional tax ratios. So with the passing of those two bylaws, the town's tax rates can now be calculated. So if you refer to Schedule A, Schedule A shows the tax ratios approved by the NACO region and the subclass tax reductions. Schedule B calculates the town's tax rates with a levy of $14.3 million. Schedule C shows the rates, tax rates approved by the NACO region. Schedule D shows the tax, tax rates for the waste management levy from the region. Schedule E shows the education rates adopted by the province. Schedule F shows the tax rates for the town's 2020 sanitary sewer levy. And Schedule G shows the rates for the downtown improvement area. If there's any questions, please, I'm here to answer them.
I can't hear Stephen again. Oh, did he finish?
Yeah, if there's if there's any questions, um.
All right, sorry. Any questions? First up, we have Counselor Sharp.
Jordan. The question I have to Stephen is that on these tax ratios, so residential property pays, it's the number one. So it's just like, that's like the base. Everything starts with the residential, right?
That's correct, yes. All tax rates are based on the residential rate. First, what we do is I calculate the residential tax rate. And then every other tax class is a factor of the residential rate. So you can see the multi-residential rate is 1.97 times the residential rate.
So so multi-residential, well, I'm looking at multi-residential and commercial, right? And so multi-residential pays more tax in a commercial property? Based on their assessment?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and what what's multi-residential? That's is that like homes with apartments, or is that like apartment buildings, or how?
Yeah, rental apartment buildings, seven units or more.
Seven units or more. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Dunstall is up next.
Thank you, worship through you to Stephen. First of all, Stephen, the 2020 levy is 14,370,000. How's that compared to 2019? And what, so that really gives us a good idea of what the impact is on every household by the increase.
Yeah, the the 2019 levy was about 12 and a half million dollars, 12.48, I believe, million dollars.
Yeah, so so that's about about 1.3, 1.4 million. And with 11,000 homes, that's about $130 a household.
That's correct.
Yeah.
On the average, on the average house, yes.
Basically, yeah, on the average. So that's that's, that's, that's where it stands. The other question I had was Schedule E, the education portion. Because of the pandemic, I just, we can defer those payments right now, I understand. And when when do we have to pay our that portion? When's it due?
Yeah, the province has extended, or they have deferred our payments to to the school boards by three months. So we don't have to pay them right now. Like, we have a an installment coming up at the end of June. That'll be deferred until September 30.
Oh, great. And any idea what, you know, what kind of cash that'll leave in the bank, so to speak?
So the 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 education levy or installment, it's usually maybe four to five million dollars every quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Vardy is up next.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Stephen, I wonder if you can give me the total difference between the 2018 tax rate and the 2020 tax rate?
I don't have those numbers right with me right now, the difference between those two rates. But I can, I can send that out to you. I can calculate that.
Well, I I I guess for the purposes of this question, really, is knowing that we tax people nearly 10% in 2018, and then, or rather, 2019.
This is getting behind the rules.
And then, you know, 13 points, something, you know, that's like 23% all told since we took office. And I guess I'm just trying to make the point that our residents have been significantly taxed since we took office. And that's always an ongoing concern for me. But my next question is, is there an opportunity now to make a change to this, to give our residents and businesses some relief?
The rates on the tax, the actual tax rates are established based on, it's a function of the tax levy. So there's no way to actually change the tax rates unless the tax levy is changed.
So to my point, can we change the tax levy at this point? To in light of COVID and what's happening, and so many people who've lost their jobs? Is this something that we can technically be permitted to revisit? And that's what I'd like to know.
Changing the tax levy would require us to reopen the 2020 budget. Um, changing the tax levy would require us to reopen the twenty twenty budget.
Perhaps that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Uh, I would agree with that as well, I would be happy to o- open up the twenty twenty budget, uh. So if we need to get a resolution together for the May nineteenth meeting, um, I would really be happy to put it on the table again, I think, uh, this has never happened before, and, uh, I think it's really time that we look at it again, because, uh, I'd really like to see, um, where we really are standing. That, that report can't come soon enough about, uh, what it's caused us so far. Uh, not to mention what it's cost businesses and people that have, uh, become unemployed during this, uh, sorry for the, um, so little quee, but, uh, Counsel Bothwell, you're up.
Uh, thank you, and it's, it's just an aside basically, um, to Stephen on the, um, with two things, IMPAC has, uh, deferred the reassessment for twenty twenty, so for twenty twenty-one, we're going to be just seeing the same rates that we're paying now. Uh, I understand, that's correct?
Yeah, the, um, assessment values, from what I understand, are gonna remain the same, uh, but hopefully we'll hear some more information. Exactly how this is all gonna happen, uh, from IMPAC over the course of the next few months.
And, and the only building when, um, Counsel Sharp was mentioning about re- multi-residential, because I'd had that discussion with you about assessment and some of our new developments out here in the West End, and how some of the newer ones are, are paying a significantly higher amount than some other, the wave versus LJM, for instance. Um, and you mentioned the only multi-residential building that we currently have right now that's a rental is Slus- uh, so this lesser building. Um, the province also had a threshold for multi-residential, which was, um, anything above two, there was some transition measure, and now they're, they've put in some new regulation to get it back down to the same level as residential, to be one-on-one. Um, so if we were to build any new rental, um, multi-residential buildings, would they be falling into that new, uh, multi-residential class of one point zero, and are we supposed to, what's that?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. Any new multi-res, um, uh, would fall under the new multi-res class, that's correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Stephen, you hear me okay? Uh, yeah, I want to go to the education tax levy, uh, Schedule E. So the region has allowed us to defer payment of those taxes, is that correct?
Um, the region, um, is basically doing, doing the same thing we are, and that's, uh, to waive interest. So if we don't make our, uh, regional, um, levy payments, then we won't be charged interest. So the next regional levy payment is due, uh, next week by the town.
Right.
And, um, and they basically taking the same, same, uh, measures that we have, deferral of interest. But they are, um, strongly asking us to pay, um, what money we can, because, um, the lower-tier municipalities are the main source of revenue for, uh, for the region.
So we become like the resident right now? So in the case of resident, in the case of residents, you were saying at the last meeting that not all residents, or very few residents, are taking advantage of, of, of the deferral. Therefore, we're collecting those taxes, and obviously, the interest is, is what it is, but. So are, are they going to go hand-in-hand, is, I mean, we're going to defer our bit, so are we, are we pocketing any money as a result of the fact that none of our, a lot of our residents aren't deferring? I mean, is there any advantages in there for us?
Um, I, I would say that whatever we've collected, we should send to the region. Um, you know, we're asking residents to do the same for, for us, and I think, you know, if we have the money, we've collected it, yes, then I would, uh, recommend that we, we pay it on time to the region.
So we're not going to hold on to it and invest it and take lots of money and all that kind of thing?
No, I, I, I would prefer that, uh, I would prefer that we help the region out as well.
Uh, and finally, uh, to Mayor Jordan's comments and to Counsel Vardy's comments of reopening the budget, I certainly would be happy to second or move a motion to that effect, uh, just to have that on record, if, if one of us uh, proposed to make that motion now, or this evening, if we want to do that. I don't know if anyone's written a motion to that effect. Do we do that now?
Because it's not on the agenda tonight, uh, it, we will need two-thirds to get to that. It's a procedural bylaw, um, to, to amend the procedural bylaw.
So can we make a notice of motion to do that next time around?
Yeah, you could. Uh, later in the meeting, there'll be room for, uh, notices of motion, so.
Okay, we can order that one, thank you.
Counsel Ritchie?
Just wanted to thank Stephen for the, the report. Uh, I can hear the conversation with lots of talk about opening up the budget. Uh, we have a report coming June first, I think it's absolutely crazy that we look at doing anything like that until we have a report from our staff on our sta- financial status. Um, Stephen, thank you very much for the report, I agree, I think that, uh, with the tax portion, it's only deferred, we should pay as much as we possibly can, um, to the region, as eventually payments come due. Thanks.
Counsel Cadwell, I thought you had your hand up?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just a, uh, question for Stephen. If he could just give us a bit of a Coles Notes version to the, um, the DIA the budget of ninety-two thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand, and how the levy, how that, I guess the, uh, the DIA, do they collect their own levy amount to give to the, is it given to the, yeah, just, uh, to understand that a little bit better, then I have another comment to, uh, Mayor Jordan, thank you.
Yeah, the, the DIA, it's an extra charge for, um, businesses within the downtown improvement area. They levy, um, an amount of money, they set a budget every year, and they levy a certain amount to help, um, with, uh, their activities during the year. Um, and I believe this year was, um, just over eighty-seven thousand dollars, uh, their levy, on a budget of ninety-two.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Stephen. Now, as counsel, do we get a copy of that budget from the DIA? Or can we, to, uh?
Yes, absolutely, I can, uh, I can circulate around, it was part of the overall budget package, um, but I can, uh, I can cir- circulate that around as well, yeah, not a problem.
Yeah, thank, thank you, I appreciate that. With regards to the budget, um, I'm not against, uh, not opening the budget up, but I've been doing a lot of research. Now, just, I'll just comment on the, on the city of Branford. Uh, a lot, a lot of municipalities, regions are looking at their budgets, but I think it's important that we get information from staff, and that's exactly what, uh, some members of council up in Branford are, uh, are asking for too, so, uh, you know, in, in due time, I think it's the right thing to do, so, uh, thank you.
Uh, seeing no further speakers for the, uh, first time, uh, Counsel Vardy, uh, you'd like to speak again?
Yes, I'm just wondering if we could have a recorded vote, uh, about being able to put a motion forward to look at opening the budget, because by the time we get a report, I mean, I, I don't think we should have to wait two more weeks to put a, uh, to put this forward, when we can do it now, and then, uh, when we do have the financial information from the town, we will already be in a position that we can look at the budget again.
Yeah, we could, we can, uh, uh, put that on right now. It's just being written.
I'm happy to move it.
Okay. Do you want me to continue with the speakers, while? Counsel Sharp wants to speak. Well, that motion's being prepared, uh, Counsel Sharp?
Jordan. Um, so some of the things that I've been reading, we, they talked about, so the region of Niagara, um, has been saying that they they're expecting like a seven million dollar price tag, meaning that it's cost them an additional seven million dollars because of the COVID situation, and the city of Welland, I read in the, in the paper, it was actually on Facebook, but it was an article from the paper, and they said that it was going to cost them about four point four million dollars uh, extra because of COVID, and, um, so then I see, I feel like that some of this talk that we're about to suspend the rules to bring a motion with regards to the budget, I think that the talk is to, to reduce the budget, but what I'm hearing is that that costs are going up for municipalities, and they're going up in two ways. One way is that we are not, we're losing revenue, we're not we're not collecting the tax revenues, we're not collecting interest on taxes, we're not collecting fees from our recreational facilities. And then there's some additional costs, um, like some of the steps that we have to take to keep our staff safe. And, um, so what I'm getting at here is that if the intent of this, to suspend the rules and reopen the budget, is to, is to lower the cost, then I think what's going to happen is that we're not allowed to run a deficit, so we, we would give, we lower the budget, and then we overspend, which other municipalities are doing, and then, um, and then, then we're required to borrow to pay that back. Municipalities don't run deficits like the province. So if we lower the budget by, say, a million dollars, and then we overspend by, say, a million dollars, then we have to borrow two million dollars, and, uh, so then we'll, we'll relieve the residents, they, maybe by twenty or thirty dollars on their tax bill, because the amount the tax got raised this year raised their tax bill by about a hundred and thirty-seven dollars, the average home, so if we can cut thirty, forty dollars from your annual tax bill, and then we have to borrow to make good on, on our budget and, and on the spending that, that actually happens, then that means what we're reducing this year, you'll just have to pay back next year with interest. All right, and we can probably spread it out over four or five years, or maybe ten years, if we, depending on the length that we borrow to pay any deficit, because we're not allowed to run a deficit. So we have several of my colleagues and several of these counselors who who bring this thought of, of lowering the budget, and I, I think that it's a mistake, I think, first of all, that we should wait until our staff can bring us a report to tell us the costs, we have two counselors, maybe three counselors, who are proposing from their limited knowledge of municipal budgets that they think the budget should be, should be lower, and, um, our staff, whom are professionals, can give us this information, and they're going to give us this information in the beginning of June, and right now, there's going to be a motion to suspend the rules, we have rules that we follow, and we're going to suspend these rules so that we can bring a motion based on the opinion of, of only a few, without the information from our staff, and so we're not at that motion yet, but I'm certainly not going to support it, and, um, uh, that's the all I have to say, thanks.
Counsel Dunstall?
Uh, yeah, thank your worship, I, I just wanted to add my comments to the whole idea of suspending the rules and having a new motion to do this, to open the budget, um. I, I think we need to wait, uh, we're only two months into this, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, this could, uh, have a second wave in the fall, from a, from a business perspective, I, I look at uh, maybe having to shutter my business in the fall again, uh, uh, I, I can, I can say that I think it's, could become much more difficult, and I think opening the budget for the sole purpose of cutting it at this point in time is, is going to uh, cut off our nose to spite our face, we are, we need to wait and see how we do over the summer, maybe in the fall, the idea of opening the budget to, to help our residents is a good idea, I think it's premature, though. It is too, too early, and that, those are my thoughts.
Counsel Vane and Counsel Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I have to agree with, um, Counsel Sharp and, uh, Counsel Dunstall, I, I think, first of all, we're almost halfway through the year, I think it's a little, um, crazy that we keep wanting to go back and reopen this budget all the time, like, you know, I, I would really like us to start moving forward, instead of constantly going backwards, trying to make a point. Uh, you know, we, we had a, an email from one of the counselors who's supporting this reopening the budget recently, who wanted to spend thousands more on the lawnmower we approved last week. Uh, then we get this legal thing tonight, uh, because we've changed, uh, Lincoln to Grimsby, and then we have a study on a street to do heritage study, when half the street's not even heritage. So, you, you know what, you can't have your cake and eat it too. If you're going to have, you want to spend on all your, your pet projects, we'll bring back the biodigester, there's a good pet project for you. Let's be serious here, folks, let's keep moving forward, most people are paying their taxes, so let's move on. You know, I, I mean, this, this has got to stop, this constantly, let's go back and see if I can make a name for myself and show everybody how, you know, important I am, and how much I am trying to do things, come on, this is a bunch of.
You're out of line, Counselor Vane. Making those insinuations.
Oh, whatever.
See, I can't mute him.
I'm offended that you would.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I was in the middle of speaking.
Uh, yeah, I think you were getting far off topic.
No, I was right on topic, sir.
I don't think the biodigester was on topic, I think that's where you probably crossed the line.
But I think it's related to what we're talking about here, is I'm trying to make a point that we are doing the same.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I'm very offended, you're being so rude.
That we were doing.
Should I just move on to, uh? All right, we're going to move on to, uh, Counsel Frick now.
Tend to agree with Counsel Vardy, and I know that Counsel Vane was referring to me there in one of his comments, but I'll leave that go. In terms of budgets, and, you know, I, I take offense again from Counsel Sharp saying that many of us don't know anything about budgets. Whether it's a budget, or whether it's a corporate budget in the, in the, in the public world, in the business world, i- it's their budgets. Okay, at the end of the day, they're budgets. Revenue is what, what makes budgets, and then you, then you put your costs around your revenue, or, or other way around. Where, whichever way you want to go, but the thing is, we need to look at our budget, see where we can cut costs. If we can cut costs, then there's things, we, we won't be spending, uh, spending our money on things we don't need to spend it on. Whether it be hiring freezes, whether it be capital projects, or whatever the case might be, we need to look at them. We, we, we're very, we seem to be very quick to stick our heads in the sand and not want to do this. And, you know, it's, it's not in the best interest of the town, and it's not in the best interest of us as counselors. I mean, is there something wrong with going back to look at the budget? What is it, what is it about that, that you guys have such a such a negative attitude towards? Because we do it, you do it all the time in the corporate world, I mean, every quarter, you look at a budget. How do we, how do we spend, how's our revenues, where can we cut costs, you know, work, those types of things, that happen all the time. It's no different here, okay, if you municipal budget, so what difference does it make? We can't run a deficit, I understand that, and while we're doing our budget review again, if we get to that, we need to look at that too, I mean, it's all part of the process. So cutting things out of budgets doesn't mean we're going to cut people out of budgets, or, or the necessary things to make the town run. Uh, anyways, I just get frustrated, but we, we just seem to keep sticking our heads in the sand and not want to deal with this, and it's in the best interest of the town. Uh, I'll leave it at that, uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, uh, just to the boover, Counsel Vardy, I, I just, I wondered if it would be, uh, more prudent to, uh, put it forward and notice a motion tonight, at tonight's meeting, to, uh, to open this up on, on the May nineteenth meeting, because, uh, right now, uh, staff's not prepared, if, if we are successful, uh, to, uh, discuss the budget tonight and to open that up, but, uh, knowing, knowing there's a notice of motion, it might make a lot more sense to have staff more prepared to this, uh, so we could discuss that in the nineteenth, but it's up to you if you want, uh,
I'm trying to put a notice of motion forward tonight. I just didn't want to wait another two weeks. I just didn't want to wait another two weeks.
Wait in order.
My, uh, my point is that, uh, the notice of motion is not on the agenda, therefore you'd have to suspend the rules to put the notice of motion on.
Yeah, it, it, we don't have to suspend the rules on that, I know, just notice a motion can be, um, added, uh, during, uh, during a meeting. So, uh, Counselor Vardy, if you want to prepare, work on a notice of motion and at the appropriate time, I'll ask for it, uh. So, uh. Where are we now, uh? Where's the report? Oh, here it is, just need a mover and a seconder for the, uh. For, uh, Stephen's report, uh, mover and a seconder. Counselor Ritchie, Counselor Frake. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, seconded by Counselor Frake, resolve that report FIN twenty dash zero six, twenty twenty tax levy and tax rates be received. And that the twenty twenty tax ratios and subclass reductions as outlined in Schedule A be adopted in accordance with Regional Bylaw twenty twenty dash eighteen. And that the town of Grimsby general tax rates as outlined in Schedule B be approved. And that the region in Niagara general tax rates as outlined in Schedule C be adopted in accordance with Regional Bylaw twenty twenty dash nineteen. And the region in Niagara waste management tax rates as outlined in Schedule D be adopted in accordance with Regional Bylaw twenty twenty dash nineteen. And the educational tax rates as outlined in Schedule E be adopted in accordance with Ontario Regulation six slash twenty. And that the town of Grimsby sanitary sewer rates as outlined in Schedule F be approved and further that the Grimsby downtown improvement area rates as outlined in Schedule G be approved. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall.
Yay.
Counselor Frake. Counselor Frake.
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie.
Yay.
Counselor Sharp.
Could you read the motion?
Resolve the report FIN twenty dash zero six, twenty twenty tax levy and tax rates be received. And that the twenty twenty tax ratios and subclass reductions as outlined in Schedule A be adopted in accordance with Regional Bylaw twenty twenty dash eighteen. And that the town of Grimsby general tax rates as outlined in Schedule B. Be approved and that the region of Niagara general tax rates as outlined in Schedule C be adopted in accordance with Regional Bylaw twenty twenty dash nineteen. And that the region of Niagara waste management tax rates as outlined in Schedule D be adopted in accordance with Regional Bylaw twenty dash nineteen. And that the educational tax rates as outlined in Schedule E be adopted in accordance with Ontario Regulation six slash twenty. And that the town of Grimsby sanitary sewer rates as outlined in Schedule F be approved and further that the Grimsby downtown improvement area rates as outlined in Schedule G be approved.
Sorry, I didn't realize that was so long, yay.
Counselor Vane.
Yay.
Counselor Vardy. Counselor Vardy.
Yay.
Myself is yay, so that's carried. Up next, we have, uh, report finance twenty dash zero seven COVID nineteen pandemic, extension of financial assistance measures. Again, uh, Stephen, our treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So then, um, March twenty fifth, uh, meeting, council approved, uh, certain, um, tax assistance measures, uh, due to COVID nineteen. Uh, one of those measures was to waive, um, interest on current tax or tax rears effective from May first until June thirtieth. There was also another measure that was to waive, um, interest, um, on water accounts and accounts receivable. At the April twentieth meeting, uh, council requested, um. Staff look at, uh, the effects of extending that waiver until September thirtieth. So I took a look at it and saw the potential lost revenue, uh, for extending the tax, uh. Waiver for an additional ninety days is an approximately eighty one thousand dollars for taxes and an additional sixty six hundred dollars for water. Uh, this would bring the total lost revenue potentially to about a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars from the period April first to September thirtieth. And if there's any questions.
Uh, Counselor Vane.
I, actually, it's not a question as much as I'd like to, uh, see if we can put a motion forward to adopt this tonight.
Do you need two thirds or? Okay. Alright, uh. I have this motion here, I have a mover, we need a seconder. Counselor Dunstall. I'll read out the, uh, resolution, moved by Counselor Vane, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that report. FIN twenty dash zero seven be received for information and that the property tax assistant waive interest payment on late fees be extended until September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Any discussion? Counselor Sharp.
Sorry, I was just getting unmuted. So I'm looking at the financial impact of this, this is some of what I was talking about previously, so, um. If I, if I could just. First of all, nor- normally we, we earn some money. From late tax revenue, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And we charge, what do we charge, one percent or one point five percent?
One point two five.
One and a quarter percent.
One point two five percent we charge, so someone told me that. Instead of like borrowing from a line of credit, they said it's better to just not pay your taxes. Because you pay less interest on, so for example, some property owners. Pay, pay twenty, thirty thousand dollars in taxes and, uh. Someone told me that, um. And it makes sense to me as a numbers thing is that. You pay less interest on a late tax payment than you would on a loan from somewhere, so why? So why pay your taxes with borrowed money? When you can just not pay your taxes, right, and then, um, I mean, eventually you have to pay your taxes to things that are certain, but, um. If you're not going to pay your taxes now, it's, it's really. Not a huge cost not to pay them, so. So what I'm getting at here is that. Part of our. Part of the money that we depend on to run the town. Comes from this revenue source and, uh. And we're going to be losing certain revenue sources like this. And how much of an impact is that going to have?
Uh, just for clarification, I believe, uh, and Stephen will probably get it as was right, I, I believe it's one point two five percent per month.
That's correct. Fifteen percent a year.
Fifteen percent per year, okay. Yeah, thank you, that's, um, don't, don't follow my financial advice, you're better to get a line of credit. But what I'm getting at is, um. This is a, a revenue item for us and that, that we're going to lose and Stephen, have we had? No, we haven't had any other payments, so we only had that one missed payment. From our prepayment program.
Uh, yeah, that's correct, um, there, um, the April, um, preauthorized payment. Um, that was due on April fifteenth, uh, there was only one non-payment. Uh, we just had a tax installment due date last Friday and, uh, we still, we're still processing some payments. Um, and well, we should know better within the next few days, um. Um, as to, um. How many people had actually paid that installment.
Okay, um. So this, this will essentially, this will cost. Eighty one thousand, six thousand for water plus the past. We're up to what it says, a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars in, in lost revenue.
Yeah, that's correct and it's based on historical numbers, what we generally see, um, it's usually about twenty seven thousand dollars, um, a month for. Uh, taxes and about twenty two hundred dollars a month for, um, water interest.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Frake.
Uh. To Stephen. So. We see a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars lost in revenue. So do we see a hundred and forty eight thousand, you can cut off our budget somewhere to offset that, I mean, this is what budgeting is all about. This is what I was referring to earlier, so I would think that by the time we get into the next two or three months and you do your next cost analysis. Uh, just on the revenue alone, we'll probably see a bigger number, so every time we take a dollar off revenue, it's got to come off the cost end of the budget, does that make sense?
Yeah, there, we're, we're looking at, um, mitigating, um, costs right now, um, so to help offset those lost revenues.
Yeah, so that, that's how, it's very simple, you know, one and one is two, you know, that type of thing, so. We need to look at the budget for those reasons alone, I mean, there's going to be a lot more costs coming down the line, uh, for us in lost revenue for one thing. And then costs, we're hiring hand over fist, I mean, this one hundred and forty eight thousand dollars is probably. Uh, the cost of one or two of our recent hires, which if we didn't do, we wouldn't, we'd be able to offset that. So we have to look at all of those things. So, I mean, the region that is lost nine point, is going to lose nine point seven million dollars as a result of this pandemic. Uh, Counselor Sharp mentioned earlier, four million dollars in Welland. Niagara Falls, uh, I kind of think it's something like close to four million as well, these guys are all looking at their budgets, looking at where they can cut costs to offset those. Things that they're losing out on their revenues, we need to be doing the same thing and that's the very reason why we need to go back to the budget, so just riff off a little bit here. But if we're, if we're not getting a hundred and forty eight thousand in revenue, we need to find a way to cut, cut some costs out of revenue.
Not cutting.
CEO.
They're cutting. Expenses, there's a difference.
Operating, operating costs, whatever, we need, we need to find a way to offset these costs.
They're not lowering taxes.
Counselor Sharp, we're.
Didn't mention.
Went order.
But anyways, that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's good.
Alright, uh, CEO, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and as council is aware, the report we provided at the last council meeting. That as soon as the pandemic started on May fourteenth, we started to, um. Lay off staff temporarily, so, uh, Counselor Frake, we acted immediately and starting to cut costs wherever we could. And we showed in that last report that, um, not only did we cut on March fourteenth, we cut again on April sixth, we cut again two, three weeks ago. So we're actually doing a really proactive job in mitigating costs. Stephen and I, we, when you first, when we first brought this up back for the last quarter, we probably, we predicted that you would probably request another quarter of relief. And we immediately started to work on where can we mitigate costs, so, um. The last report was quite extensive on that and, and we were really hoping that you could wait till June first, so I'm asking Counsel Vardy if she brings that motion forward. Because to be fair to Stephen and the team, the finance team, we sort of planned that out, that we'd have a really comprehensive. Financial impact report, which we've been mitigating for a long time. Uh, right from March fourteenth, so. If, if, if council would, if the notice of motion comes forward, I would please ask that you put June first for a response, so we can give you a really comprehensive look. At how we mitigate the costs and how we plan to mitigate them for the year.
Uh, any speakers for a first time, uh, Counselor Frake would like to speak a second time, if I don't see any for a first time. Counselor Dunstall.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what our town. Manager just informed us, I, I mean, the purpose of opening a budget is to try and cut costs, but the. Town manager and staff are already in the process of doing that, which doesn't us, does not require us right now to. Lower the levy, I, I think it would be a major mistake trying to lower the levy and I see that that would be the purpose of opening a budget and. I think that would be the wise thing to do, especially come next year, we're going to have a much tougher year in two thousand twenty one than we even know what we're in for. Thank you.
Counselor Vardy.
Uh, yes, I just want to answer, uh. Uh, Mr. Schlang's comment, um, I'd like the motion to go forward and I've sent it to you and, uh, to Sarah. Um, but I, I'm not suggesting that we open the budget right away. Uh, I'm fine for waiting, but I just think that we should decide that we should be able to open the budget should we need to. So, uh, you, you've been sent the motion, so. I hope that's, uh. That's amenable to everybody.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, put that together and we'll read that at the, uh, appropriate time in the meeting, uh.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, may I ask that you sanction, uh, Counselor Vane for his disparaging remarks, I found that quite offensive.
You know, I found yours quite offensive, so, you know, both ways. Mayor Jordan, if you want.
I can't, uh.
Censor people.
Yeah.
He needs to be censured as well.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think.
Who are we at, Counselor Frake?
We'll get there. Uh, I appreciate what CEO, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what, what CEO Shanks was saying, but. I, I don't, I'm not really convinced and I don't feel that we're doing a great job at. Curbing costs, cutting costs, when, 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 when we're showing the general public that we're hiring people. That we can probably defer, I mean, those are costs I don't think we need right now and I hate to keep bringing this up. But I think these are costs we can defer and, and, but we're not doing it, okay, so we're able to find a forty thousand dollars and for some, somewhere or other that, um. To, to bring an EDO forward, for example. Do we need to do that, if we had forty thousand dollars in kitty, why do we go ahead and blow it and spend it on something that we're, you know, for our own person, we're not even going to be.
I, I think our treasurer would, sorry to interrupt you, but our treasurer would like to speak on.
I, I just feel that we just, I, I know, no disrespect to Stephen or, or any of his folks, but. I just feel like, we just need to be very vigilant at this point in time, not knowing where we're going, we don't know where this is going to go. And we just need to have something in, in that, in that bucket that we can refer, that we can go to.
Um, with regard to, um, opening up the budget, um, we have a very limited time to actually open the budget. Because the town, um, must get its tax rates established, uh, we must get our tax rates into the provincial system and it would be, um. Uh, probably, I mean, I would say until the end of May, uh, would be the latest and once the rates are passed, then the budget can no longer be open. Because then we have to start billing the final tax levy, so, um. Opening the budget would have to happen on a, in, in, any amendments be made in a very short period of time. Um. We are, we're ready, um, the region has already finalized their rates, we are now requested to enter our tax rates. Now that we've got them, um, approved into the provincial, um, rate system. Um, so we're running out of time to actually open up the budget, amend the levy and approve new rates, so I just wanted to. To make council aware of the short timeframe that we actually have.
Alright, thank you, Stephen, uh. Counselor. Counselor Ritchie hasn't spoken on it, so Counselor Ritchie, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so I guess my point is, or my question to Stephen is, is that did we not just pass the rates, uh, at this council? So if we just pass the rates and all the rest, then I would consider that, uh, the budget is done, would it not be?
Um, yes, technically, yes, uh, but the bylaw hasn't come forward yet to approve the rates. So the rates are passed, so the budget technically would be done once the bylaw comes forward, that'll come at the next council. So the rates are passed, so the budget technically would be done once the bylaw comes forward, that'll come at the next council meeting.
So the, the um, advice to push it to June first was probably bad advice then, uh, so we need to deal with it on the nineteenth, obviously. Uh, Counselor Sharp, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, um, so I just wanted to, to follow up on Counselor Frake's comment. He says, so we're talking about um, that we'll lose a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars in revenue from, from this deferred tax, and then so he wants to remove, so we have, basically, we have two, or we have more than two, but or most of our revenue comes from taxes, we collect taxes from the taxpayer, and then we use that money to pay for the services that we have. And then some of our revenue comes from user fees, and a small portion of our revenue comes from interest on, on late taxes. And so we're out close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from, from this lack of revenue that we've deferred from the interest. And, and so what he said, it is in his last little speech was that he wants to remove other, he wants to reduce the budget, so we have a revenue that's tax collected, and we have a revenue that's interest collected. And we've lost one revenue, and, and he's talking about reducing another revenue, so like costs are going up. And he wants to lower another one of our revenues, one of our revenues is taxes collected from residents. It's based on the assessed value of your home, we collect, and we use that to pay for roads, we use that to pay for your arenas, we use that to pay for, for stuff. We can defer things like staff, and we have laid off some part-time staff and temporarily laid off the, some of our rec stuff. And, and we're looking at saving costs, but if we reduce the budget, that will save money on the taxpayers. But, but it takes money away from our revenues, we need to, to pay for, there's a, a list of things that the cost of the town has. And so Counselor Frake, when he talks about removing money from the budget, it's, it's not removing costs, it's, it's removing money that we're going to collect, and, and it puts us in a further deficit, and it's going to cause us to borrow money, and a few meetings ago, this would have been around, I don't know, when we were still meeting in person, the first thing that was brought up was laying off staff. And the other thing that was brought up was our line of credit, and so if we reduce taxes and our costs go up, we're going to end up borrowing money. Right, and so the other thing is, I'm looking again at Counselor Frake, he's talking about that in corporations in the private sector that they review the budget every quarter, municipalities don't do that. We, like, we, we're constantly looking at our budget to see if we're on target, to see if we're meeting the budget, that's what our administrative officer does. And um, we don't review the budget three, four times a year, I don't know where you come up with this stuff, but like, this is, this is nuts, I, I'm all for having responsible taxes, I'm all for doing the best that we can to provide good services for our municipality, but these statements like, oh, we're losing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from one revenue stream, let's cut another hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our other revenue stream. It's backwards, it's completely bonkers, right? And so we have a few, there's a couple around on this council, and I'm pointing at them right here on my computer screen, but they are trying to steer this town in a bad direction, and every meeting, every time, that's all we hear, every single time, oh, let's, they rehash the same thing over and over and over again. We're going to have to suspend the. I'm not finished talking here, I don't know what's going on, but this is enough, I'm not in favor of this.
Up next, we have uh, Counselor Dunstall.
Thank you, Your Worship, just to add to this hundred and forty eight thousand dollars that we're going to lose, and uh, something was brought up about the Economic Development Manager that we're in the process of hiring. And maybe uh, Regional Counselor Furtick can confirm this, but the region has now promoted uh, Kelly Provost out of her position as the Economic Development Manager. Uh, and I think her new title is Strategic Initiatives, and they've hired a, another person to replace her as the Economic Development Manager for a year. So they're actually adding staff in the Economic Department to help, and I got to say, it's because of the pandemic, because of COVID nineteen, yet we continually hear that we're being criticized for looking at hiring an Economic Development Officer here in the town of Grimsby, and the region is doing it also, so I, I think we've got to realize that we have an economic crisis on our hands of paramount, and we need to do something about it, and so I just want to add that, and didn't appreciate being referred to as sticking my head in the sand.
All right, I don't think Counselor Vane spoke yet, uh, Counselor Vane?
A couple of points, first of all, I have um, a comment to the town manager, and I have one to yourself. Um, just a point of uh, interest here is that I've noticed that myself and Counselor Sharp and others, when we disagree with a topic you're not agreeing with, that you have the clerk put us on mute, and I don't appreciate that. So next point is to the town manager, Mr. Schlang, could you tell me, are we basically covering these shortfalls as you say through, you know, cuts of the uh, town that you are doing? Uh, like, is it necessary to reopen this budget again? Like, it seems every meeting we talk about this, um, but it sounds like you've got it all under control, as you should, in your role as the manager of the town. Um, so I just want to confirm that with you, if you wouldn't mind confirming that, please.
CEO?
Yes, um, as, as we said at the last report, it's not just me, Counselor, it's the entire team is looking at every, every possible option to mitigate costs, and we've been looking at this since March twelfth. I can reassure you of that, and we were planning to give you a really comprehensive report on June first to show you what we're doing, what we're planning, and, and, and actually forecasting worst-case scenarios through uh, June to September first and even to December thirty first. So we're really trying hard to stay ahead of it, because as you know, we can't run a deficit. I agree with Counselor Sharp, everything we need in the, the, the budget that you approved, we need to mitigate every possible cost we can, and deferring some initiatives that councils put forward, but at the same time, making sure we balance the budget for this year.
Counselor Cadwell, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I just want to know how we got so off-topic here with this report that Stephen was. How discussion got way, way out of.
Just as it started, yeah, it's budgets.
Hello?
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes, uh, Mayor Jordan, did you hear my comments?
Yeah, it, it, I, I, it got off-topic uh, with uh, cross-talk, and uh, it's completely off-topic now, so I, I think we'll call the question and, and um, and uh, read uh, the resolution now. Uh, I think we spent far too long on this, uh, moved by uh, Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Dunstall, resolve that report FIN twenty dash zero seven be received for information, and that the property tax assistant waiver's interest payment on late fees be extended until September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp is a yay. Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy? Counselor Vardy, I didn't hear you.
Yay.
And myself is yay, so that's carried. What's up next? Where is it? Yeah, up next is the Planning and Development Committee Status Report and Activity Update. Walter?
Hi, Walter. Oh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and, and Council. Um, what you have before you is uh, um, again, a status and activity report that uh, we regularly prepare for uh, the Planning and Development Committee. Uh, just to give uh, uh, members of the committee and uh, members of council an idea where uh, development applications like official plan amendments, zoning amendments, site plans and whatnot are in the process, so um, uh, we regularly update this uh, report uh, for every meeting, and uh, typically what I do is uh, I just present it to uh, or bring it to the committee's attention, and if anybody has any specific questions about any of the items on there, uh, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yes, uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, and through you to uh, Mr. Basic. The twenty five Bartlett Avenue Development, is that the old Niagara Regional Police Station? And I'm just wondering, how long has that been uh, on the books? Because I'm going back a few terms, uh, Walter, and uh, still, is there a expiry date to developments? I guess that's my question with regards to uh, twenty five Bartlett Avenue, thank you.
Yes, the application was originally made in two thousand and fifteen, which is five years ago. Uh, the applications that were submitted uh, were um, actually refused by council, they were appealed by the applicants.
Remember that?
Official plan amendments and zoning amendment application, and uh, there was a settlement that was achieved uh, through uh, through negotiation at the time, and uh, uh, what we're waiting on, so we have an existing official plan policy for the site, and zoning regulations for the site that were approved by the then Ontario Municipal Board. Uh, the applicants um, are uh, still, or still haven't submitted a site plan application. So that would be the next step in the process of uh, having the site developed, uh, which would be a detailed site plan application, where we would look at things like landscaping, uh, building details and whatnot. So uh, there aren't uh, any limitations on when, as long as the official plan and zoning reg, policies and zoning regulations are in place. Um, um, the applicant can submit a site plan application when they feel it's necessary or appropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Walter.
Counselor Dunstall?
I thank you, Your Worship, through you to Mr. Basic, uh, just a couple of questions. Um, two sixty, two seventy Hunter Road, is that the old Ukrainian Hall?
Uh, two sixty and two seventy Hunter Road is um, is Leuna Training Facility. So it was, it's formerly um, the Westbrook Greenhouse.
Okay.
Center, yeah.
All right, one more question, if I might, and that's
Yes.
Two twenty six and two twenty eight Main Street East, it, uh, it looks like we approved the zoning bylaw amendment, but now the developers are off to LPAT with no, because of the pandemic, uh, no uh, date, uh, or no notice of a date. Um, uh, he's, I, I just, is, is this a third party that's made the appeal?
Yes, this, uh, it's a neighbor that appealed that particular uh, decision of council, so uh, yeah, so we're waiting on LPAT to schedule a hearing for that one.
Now, we've had that happen in the past, uh, does, do they not have to hire a planner to make this uh, uh, a bona fide uh, appeal, uh, can a neighbor just take some, some developer uh, to LPAT uh, without a planner? Maybe, maybe Counselor Bothwell could enlighten us on something like that.
I'm sorry, is that a question for me or?
I don't know, yeah, well, because I mean, when third parties will take, take developers to LPAD, they don't necessar, well, it just, they don't necessarily win, and I, I mean, he's just a small developer, and I'm just kind of, my, I'm just kind of feeling bad for him, I mean, that's uh, that's, that's a shame, that'll stall that uh, development for a year or more now because of the pandemic. And uh, who knows if developers are going to be around in a couple of years, they're probably all going to be, uh, you know, there won't be any development at all after this pandemic. So I, I just feel, it's a shame, anyhow, I guess they can do it.
That's, that's correct, um, uh, there's no requirement per se for uh, representation of that kind. Um, the hearing officers normally take these things into consideration when, uh, when they're hearing arguments from sides, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bothwell?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Jordan, I was a little unsure as to where, why that was directed at me, that last question. Um, but uh, my question's, uh, Mr. Basic, um, thank you very much for the report, it's always great to see it, because I think it gives the public a really good understanding of what's happening around in the neighborhoods, and uh, answers a lot of their questions, so it, it stops a lot of them coming to you guys, so that's the idea, is to put the information out there, and people have it. Um, I did notice now with the uh, the statutory restriction, like the emergency declaration, there's the suspension of statutory timelines, and I noticed that two things have happened, the Grimsby Beach, we know interim control bylaw will be extended, as you confirmed, um, at the end of the emergency period for the duration of the emergency period. Um, so we know we have one year plus that, um, before that one expires. You did in this, um, you did extend the three sixty one South Service Road, you reposted the notice of the official plan and the zoning bylaws that we just passed for that, and I just wondered why we posted, reposted the notices of the passing of those bylaws, uh, April twenty fourth, when we're still in the emergency period, I, I just wondered how you interpreted the need to repost that one particularly now? That's one of my questions, and I have another one.
Yes, uh, we were required to repost uh, for um, decisions that were made within a, a specific period of time uh, by the province.
What?
It's just to provide additional information for uh, those that are receiving the notices.
I thought, though, it has to be reposted at the end of the emergency period.
Uh, the information we got is that we needed to repost it now.
Okay. And for, that, that's just strange, that's just odd that they would stick it in the middle of the emergency period when the declaration was to suspend it, but anyway. Um, one other question, um, the the heritage, uh, we used to get a really neat heritage update as well, um, uh, from the Heritage Committee with um, outstanding designation reports that were pending to come to council. I just wondered if there was a number of them that were very, very close to completion, and that were going to come to council um, for some uh, designation of properties along Main Street, do you know if those can still come to council now, or um, do we have, like, is there, is there some reason why we wouldn't bring those forward now?
The intent is, once the reports are completed uh, for uh, designation, well, actually, those are the designation reports that you're referring to. Um, it's the intent to uh, circulate those reports to members of the uh, Heritage Committee uh, for comment prior to uh, the reports being brought to council for consideration. Uh, we still, because we have a Heritage Committee, it's, it's, it's needed, or it's required that we consult with the Heritage Committee um, prior to um, submitting any, or prior to council making any decisions on heritage matters like that.
Thank you, I, I understand that, I just know that at the last, we had one or two or three of them that were completed, and we're waiting just bill one oh eight modifications for the timeline and notification, that was the only thing that was outstanding. So I, I didn't know if they could be, since we don't have committees, um, is there, is there a way that those can be brought forward at this point, I just don't want to, you know, if we don't have Heritage Committee for three or four or five months, um, some of these are critical, some of these are, are more timely, time sensitive designations.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate your question, I think, I think uh, it's important that we, even though the Heritage Committee, um, even if the Heritage Committee isn't meeting, I think it's important. if the Heritage Committee isn't meeting, I think it's important that council gets input from the Heritage Committee regarding these issues. Because the Heritage Act still requires that council consult Heritage Committee on these matters. So once the reports are complete, the Heritage Committee will be consulted and, and then we will address any comments we receive from the Heritage Committee in a supplementary report to council. So that's, that's our intent. And again, we're required to consult with the Heritage Committee. And that's, that's what we intend to do. I'm not sure if you're suggesting we should bypass that. I don't, are able to do that, but I think it's important that we get input from the Heritage Committee.
Totally. It's, these ones were originally brought forward and it was just a matter of the reports were all completed and it was a matter of just notifying the owners. That was the only step left. So I, from a couple of these, it looked to me like there was, the Heritage Committee had totally been consulted right up to the end. And then we were sitting there waiting for Bill 108, which is notification of the, of the homeowners only. So in those cases, I don't see that there's another step within the Heritage Act required. I see it as, as, as just a completion of the, it was delayed because of the Bill 108 notification issue. So regardless, I'm hopeful that however we look at this, we get this committee, especially because of its mandate under the Act, somehow functioning as quickly as possible so that some of these, these items can be moved forward. I just, I just hate to see them sitting just because we don't have the, a way to meet.
Yeah, again, maybe, maybe I'm confused about which specific ones you're referring to. Maybe we can take the discussion offline. I'm more than happy to give you information about the specifics of any one of the reports that you're referring to. Again, I'll be more than happy to do that if you like.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Just need a mover and seconder. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, seconded by Counsel Frank. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, seconded by Counsel Frank, resolved that the planning and committee status activity update be received for information. Recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell?
Yay.
Counsel Dunstall?
Yay.
Counsel Frank?
Yay.
Counsel Cadwell?
Yay.
Counsel Ritchie?
Yay.
Counsel Sharp?
Yay.
Counsel Bain?
Yay.
Counsel Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, it's a yay, so that's carried. Yeah, but you don't need a mover and seconder. Up next, we have a notice of motion moved by Counsel Bain. It's a resolution. Oh, yeah, sorry, that wasn't a notice of motion before. It's a resolution moved by Counsel Bain. Just need a seconder to get it on the floor. Counsel Cadwell? And it's council composition and ward boundary review. Discussion, Counsel Frank?
To Mayor. Yeah, I mean, I have no, no problem with this particular motion as it is, but I do have a few things that I'd add. I don't know why now that's come up. If there's some particular motive behind that, I don't know. But I don't think this is a study or a review that should be done by staff. I think this needs to be done by someone that's professional in the municipal world, in the municipal politics and these types of things, somebody who's experienced, someone for example, like Michael Fenn, that type of person. And I, and I think we should add a few things to that particular study. I mean, like, we need feedback from the public. We need to look at the mayor and regional councils' positions, you know, wards versus people, you know, councils at large, campaign cost limits, salary reviews. There's a whole lot of stuff attached to this particular motion that, this is why I think it needs to go to somebody outside of staff and someone who's a professional consultant in this area. But I have no problem with the motion, to be very honest with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments?
Counsel Bain?
And the way the motion is intended is that, while I consider our staff to be very professional and very experienced, that they can consult with the municipal, Ministry of Municipal Affairs. The idea is to look at the council boundaries, which I believe Counsel Bothwell had mentioned to the clerk before, but also the intent is to reduce the size of council for several reasons. The savings alone would be just shy of $100,000 a year to the town. And then I also would like to look at whether we actually need a second regional counselor outside of the mayor or whether the mayor can represent our interests. Having two counselors really does us no benefit at the region, only because St. Catherine's has eight, so why bother? So we could save a fair amount of money here, and that's the whole idea. Plus, I think there would be a lot less disagreement on the council. I think this council is far too large for the town this size. I've said that since before getting elected, that we shouldn't have a council this size. So I believe that the town staff, in conjunction with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, can can work on this and put a suggestion forward for the 2022 election. I really hope to see at that time that we will only have four local counselors. And then as far as running at large, that's unreasonable for most people because the cost would be prohibitive. So I agree that we should keep the wards. And that's what I would recommend to the town. But again, I would put, like to put this under the town manager and, and have him either work with somebody or assign it to somebody and, and work with Ministry of Municipal Affairs. That's really who we should be going to for guidance, not our own stuff. Thank you.
There we go. Counsel Bothwell?
Sorry, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Yes, Counsel Bain's correct. I did bring this to the attention of the CAO and the clerk on, actually, December the 5th by email. And what I did was I based it on the Administrative Finance Committee meeting minutes of August 8, 2016, where, since I attended a lot of, well, all council meetings from 2014 on, and this was an item on the agenda in 2016, that the ward boundary review be pursued. It was actually, Counsel Dunstall might remember because he moved it, be received and that the Administrative Finance Committee recommended that staff continue to pursue solutions to inequities in ward population. The report at that time by the clerk indicated that since 2014, there was anticipated growth and they expected that Ward Four particularly was going to, the difference between Wards Three and Four, there's a $1,000 voter difference at that time. There had to be a 25% threshold in order to consider it. However, at the time of the 2018 election, Ward Four was anticipated to increase in population. So they were advised by a consultant at that time that precedent actually requires awards be equalized according to population numbers, not the number of voters. And in 2009, this committee and council determined that major changes to the ward configuration were not required. They did a ward review in 2009, which was undertaken by staff. Staff is, in this report, it says that staff is making the same recommendation, recommendation that the boundaries are realigned as opposed to a full boundary review. Staff is also making the recommendation that it be undertaken by a consultant. So they knew that, that time, that it wasn't something that they would be prepared to take on. And a full boundary review would cost approximately $30,000. So at that, in consultation with Director of Public Works, he stated that staff is unavailable to provide the mapping, population statistics and physical attributes in the municipality, which help in determining changes to ward boundaries. So the scope of this type of an exercise is quite extensive. It costs money. We haven't got it in the budget this year. So the reason I didn't bring it forward at the time was because I was preparing my motion to come forward for the budget for 2021. So it would have been in the fall of this year. So I'm, I'm, I don't have a problem with this coming forward. I just think it, we probably should defer it until we can consider it in the budget concerning the constraints that we have right now with money and it not being a high priority at this moment. So if it can be deferred, I think till October or so, November, when we start budget considerations and then look at what type of a scope of, needs to be taken under at that time. So that's my, my preference would be to, to not, not move it to staff and to defer it until the fall, September or October. Thank you.
All right, the clerk would like to comment. Sarah?
You, Mr. Mayor. So initially, when Counsel Bothwell brought this to our attention, we were planning for this to be part of a election plan targeted more along the lines of 2021, early 2021. Looking at very initial statistics, there is award misalignment of greater than 25%. Actually, it's around 30% between Wards Three and Four. So the recommendation that time would be really to consider council composition as part of a more comprehensive ward boundary review.
Thank you, Sarah. Counsel Vardy?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, I mean, in general term, I'm in support of this, this motion. However, I just would like to echo Counsel Frank's and Counsel Bothwell's remarks in that I think, I think the expertise required to really do this is really outside of the scope of staff expertise. And that's no reflection on, on staff. And I also think that the question itself is more, is more complex, as Counselor Frank said. You know, do we continue with wards? Is it, you know, counselors at large sort of first pass the post? There's many different ways, you know? Is the number four, is the number six? I don't know. So I just think that there's, there's a lot that needs to be studied and, and it really should be in the hands of somebody who, who has experience in doing this. So, so all that to say, I'm, I'm in support of the motion in general terms. However, I don't believe it's a staff duty. And I do think we should wait for the, the next budget as Counsel Bothwell has, has put forward so that it can be properly funded and, and properly done. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. So the first question I have goes maybe to the clerk or the CAO. I don't know. But who determines our wards? Is it determined by the municipality or is it determined by the province?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. It would be through the decision of council. I mean, once you do the ward boundary review, recommendations would be placed by, if you choose to go with a consultant, those recommendations will be brought forward and you would be approving it.
So we can change our ward boundaries?
It would be done through a comprehensive review, right? So it would consider all the factors relevant, necessary, and then the recommendation would be brought forward.
Is that, is that considered gerrymandering? Like, when a council-
Well, here, I'll just, I'll just, I think what we do and what was always done in the past is, is trying to keep each ward with the same population. So dividing up the four wards by whatever the total population is. So the wards mirror the total population of the town just as quarter. So that's why with growth in certain areas in the town, historically, that's why some wards ended up with more than others. And Ward Four tends to have the most right now. So just a little history lesson.
Yeah. Well, I hope they don't move me out of my ward because I like living in Ward Four and I like being the counselor in Ward Four. I grew up here, actually. So, but the, the next thing I want to ask is, is it possible for staff to give us just a basic report, right? Without going into a lot of detail, without spending a lot of time? Like, for example, some information on, on the composition of the wards as they are, the number of residents and the number of people who voted, the geographic area, like just basic stuff that, that we can use for our decision-making when it comes time to create a budget? Because this is a budget item. $30,000 in 2009 is like $50,000 in 2020. And so there'll be some consideration that we have to give. Is it possible for staff to give a basic report?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think this resolution states for staff to bring back a report and we can provide those basic information for consideration.
Could we, does it require an amendment? Or would, would you be willing to, to accept a small amendment if necessary? Randy? I mean, Counsel Bain?
I think-
Yeah, buddy, yes.
Yeah, I think it's fine the way it's written now because it says be resolved that staff be directed to review. So-
Yeah. And so I'm in support, it sounds like some of the other, my colleagues are. And I don't want staff to, staff can kind of govern their own time and, and give us the information would be great.
Any further discussion for a first time? Counsel Cadwell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Jordan. And I think initially this is worthy of, of looking at. I remember in the past, the city of St. Catherine's, I think more than one occasion in dealing with the region, they looked at dual duty at council, I believe. So, you know, it, you look at your options. Maybe there's a better way of doing business. So, and I think it's only fair to make the report from staff to see if staff has the time and are, and are capable of doing, doing this report. So again, reading the resolution, the result that staff be, be directed, I think the way it's written, sounds great. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cadwell. Counsel Bain?
I, I just want to make sure we don't get too hung up on the boundaries part. That wasn't the main point of my, my thing. We, as far as boundaries, if you just add the fifth wheel of the settlement to the Ward Three, you've balanced it very easily. But anyways, that's more for a consultant, I guess. But anyways, all that aside, my main point here is the size of council. The size of council is unmanageable right now as it is. And it's also very expensive. When you can take away almost $100,000 a year, that, that's the equivalent of almost 1% of our budget every year. So I think that's something that we should be seriously considering sooner rather than later. I think, yes, it's something in 2021, we may want to look at the ward boundaries and hire somebody to come in and say what I just said. And, and that's fine. But in the meantime, I think we do need to seriously have staff work with the ministry and talk about reducing it so it's first across the line in each ward. That's all.
Thank you, Counsel Bain. Counsel Bothwell?
Thanks again, Mayor Jordan. I just would seek clarification then on the motion because it does ask direct staff to review council composition along with award boundary review and report back to council. And award boundary review is quite intensive and costs money. So if that's the intent of this motion, I can't support it because I don't believe staff are, from what I can understand from this 2016 report, that award boundary review would be best managed in the hands of staff at this time as we're especially undergoing this COVID crisis. So I think if the intent is, which it says, award boundary review, I, I'm unsure what that means the clerk would be able to provide to council.
Thank you. Clerk, do you want to, to offer some direction? Thank you. Thank you.
We can come back through you, Mr. Mayor. We can come back with the initial report, just outlining some basic factors. For example, there are guiding principles for ward boundary review such as, you know, considering factors as population, electoral trends, communication accessibility, geographical features, all that. So if council would like, we could bring that initial information to consider further and then to see if council would like to proceed with a comprehensive ward boundary Comprehensive word boundary review with a consultant and to also consider uh council composition during that uh. During that study.
Um, so then I would think the wording might need to be changed. So instead of award boundary review, um, maybe just a report on. Um. Um. You know what I mean? Instead of, because when you say award boundary review, that's to me the full package. So I think you just want a. Um, uh. Guidance on the process to. Um. Um, proceed with the ward boundary review, something like that, or guidance and, and information on process. For, to proceed with the word boundary view. I think that's more what you're asking for, not to, to ask staff to complete a full board boundary review. So I, I, I. I'm asking, I guess, for a friendly amendment if uh. If Counsel Vane is open to just slightly changing the wording.
Counselor Vane, are you okay with that?
The only amendment I would be willing to accept is to split it. Take one half of the, uh, create a new motion for the, a council, uh. Composition and one for the uh board boundary. I don't want the two getting mixed up. Apparently, it's getting too muddied up this with these two things together. Uh, it was not my intent to put them together. It was a suggestion. So I did it. I would rather see them split up as two separate issues. And uh, because we, we've got to start taking this council thing seriously. People are complaining. The residents are complaining. So let's show them that we're actually doing something. So I would, I would be open to splitting the motion, but not uh, not watering it down.
Yes, I'm, I'm happy to split the motion too. And, and as far as the uh council composition, I was around in the Mike Harris days when uh. The Berkeley report came and uh. Any of the municipalities that were amalgamated, uh, there were uh zero cost savings. Uh, when they cut councils by half size, uh, councils uh renumeration went up. Um, because they were looking after uh twice as many people, fielding twice as many calls. And uh, another fact that there was less representation. And they were twice as hard to get a hold of because there was only half the people you could get a hold of. So. Saw that before and I don't see why it'd be any different now. Counselor Vane, so what you want to do is you want um staff to do two separate previews? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. So the clerk's preparing two separate resolutions. All right. I'll read them out separately. Um. For simplicity, keep the same mover and seconder. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Cadwell. Whereas the town of Grinsby has seen a growth since two thousand, the two thousand and fourteen election and whereas the. Award boundary review is recommended when the wards are out of alignment by more than twenty five percent and we're. All right, the way this is written isn't. But then that. All right, further clarification. I'll reread it again. Um, moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Cadwell. Um, whereas it may be beneficial to review council composition from eight members and ahead of council. To four members and ahead of council for the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six term of council, be it resolved that staff bring back a report to council. Counselor Bothwell?
Nay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Pardon me?
Sorry, yay.
All right. Counselor Frake?
Nay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Nay, only because I don't believe the town should be doing this.
And I'm a nay, uh, only because I don't think it would uh benefit anyone.
Point of order. Um, are we, can we have just yay or nay?
Sure. So I apologize for that. Yeah. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Cadwell. Whereas the town of Grinsby has seen a growth. Since the two thousand and fourteen election and whereas a board ward boundary review is recommended when the wards are out of alignment by more than twenty five percent. Be it resolved that staff be directed to review council composition along with award boundary. Oh, sorry. Be it resolved that staff be directed to review award or. Carry out award bound, boundary review. With guidance and information and report back to council. Counselor Bothwell?
As long as it's not costing us and it's just information, yay.
Point of order. You can't do that. Dorothy or Counsel Bothwell does it all the time.
Can you read, can you read the motion again, please?
Sure. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Cadwell. Whereas the town of Grinsby has seen a. A growth since the two thousand and fourteen election and whereas a ward boundary review is recommended when the words are out of alignment by more than twenty five percent. Be it resolved that staff be directed. To review guidance and information report on award boundary review and report back to council.
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp's a yay. Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself a yay, so that is carried. Where's the next motion? Right. All right, before I read this, we'll get, um, Counsel Ritchie's the mover. Was the notice of motion that was brought last council meeting to support for commercial rest, rent assistance program, uh, seconder. Counselor Vane? Do you want to discuss this, having it in front of you guys or, or would you like me to read it first? I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, second by Counsel Vane. Whereas these are unprecedented times that have. Not been seen in generations and whereas on April sixteenth, twenty twenty, the Canadian federal government announced a new program called. The Canada Emergency Commercial Rent Assistance. And whereas the program is. To be developed in unison with the provincial and territorial counterparts. And whereas this program is to provide relief to small businesses in Grinsby and throughout Canada. With their rent for the months of April, May and June. And whereas many provincial programs have been announced to date, but have generally been aimed at. Residential rather than commercial. Rent markets. And whereas many small businesses in the town of Grinsby have been affected financially due to COVID nineteen. Thus making rent payments difficult. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Grinsby endorse this program wholeheartedly. And request the federal government of Canada to work with its provincial and territorial partners to expedite this program and offer this program as soon as possible. And be it further resolved that the town of Grinsby asks the federal government and provincial and territorial partners. To look at the possibility of extending this program if the impacts of COVID nineteen continue past the months. Of June and be it further resolved that. The town of Grinsby asks the federal government and its provincial and territorial partners to make this program a hundred percent forgiving to the small businesses affected. And be it further resolved that the motion be distributed to the right honorable Prime Minister of Canada, the honorable Minister of Finance. The honorable Premier of Ontario and all municipalities in Ontario. Discussion? Seeing none, uh, Counsel Bothwell, recorded vote?
I think Counsel Dunstall has his hand up.
Oh. Sorry, I didn't see it on the screen there. Counselor Dunstall?
Yeah, I, I just, sorry, I was gonna ask, uh, thank you, your worship through you to. Counselor Ritchie, the uh, the second last uh statement, be it therefore resolved that the town of Grinsby asks the federal. Government and its provincial and territory partners to make this program a hundred percent forgiving. That kind of threw me the program. What has come out is seventy five percent, which actually it's really only fifty percent. And that was the kind, the thing that kind of threw me. Uh, the, the tenant pays twenty five. The landlord pays twenty five and then the federal government uh. Uh, gives a forgivable loan of fifty percent of whatever the rent is. Uh, but I, so when I read the hundred percent, I, I thought maybe you were trying to imply that the. The fifty percent should go to a hundred percent. So I don't know if that word a hundred percent should be in there. Can Counsel Ritchie explain?
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So my, my intent there is that uh, whatever portion the federal provincial government uh gives to the small businesses. There was talk at the time that they might have to repay some of that back, whether it was through different programs of loaning them money to make their rent program. Uh, to, to assist with them. So I just wanted whatever portion that was uh going to be provided to them to make sure that they didn't have to pay it back. Of course, this is in the hands of the provincial and federal government. So the more they can do as they have, uh, they control the funds in the province and the country. The more they could do for the small businesses when it comes to rent, the better. So I just wanted to make sure that uh. My intent there for one hundred percent forgiving is that the small businesses will not be forced to repay anything. Such as some of, of the other programs that, that are just being deferred.
I guess I'm the only one who saw it that way, so I. We're good.
Okay, uh, Counselor Frake?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a small, small correction to Counselor Dunstall's note. It's actually the federal government is thirty seven and a half. They give back thirty seven and a half and the provincial gives back twelve and a half, just to make a small correction there.
Thank you. That's noted. Uh, so uh, seeing no further discussion. Uh, recorded vote, Counsel Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself a yay, so that's carried. Up next, we have um. A resolution um about the high school bursary program. It's graduation time again. Uh. Uh, and uh. We uh wanted to continue to uh provide the uh bursaries, uh. One male student and one female student of five hundred dollars and to each of the uh secondary schools and thus to be used with hydro reserve. Any comments? Oh, we need a mover and seconder. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Ritchie. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that funds in the following amounts be distributed from the Hydro Director Reserve. Bursaries for the graduating class determined by. Most volunteer hours completed by one female and one male student. Grinsby Secondary School, two five hundred dollar bursaries and Blessed Trinity Catholic Secondary School, two five hundred dollar bursaries. Uh, recorded vote, um, Counsel Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Hey.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, it's a yay, so that's carried. Now we move to uh correspondence. Up first is uh, from the Niagara region, optional tax on vacant residential units. Uh, need a mover and seconder. Moved by Counsel Ritchie, second by Counsel Vane. A discussion, Counsel Sharp?
Mayor Jordan, I, I just had a question. Um. What is this optional tax on vacant residential units? Does this affect our taxing at all?
It was a correspondence from the region. Uh. I don't have it in front of me right now.
Is there someone from the region who can help me understand?
George?
Counselor Furtick, do you? I don't want to blindside you, but uh, do you have any information on this uh letter? I don't have the letter in front of me right now.
Hi, thanks, uh, Mayor Jordan. Uh, I do have um the letter in front of me. Obviously, I didn't review it because uh. Um. There's the only financial considerations. If it affects, if it affects the taxes. Obviously, it's gonna filter down to the municipality if it's for vacant properties. So that's about all I can tell you. It has to filter down. If, if there's a, if there's an exemption somewhere along the line, then the exemption must come back to the, maybe uh. C A O could answer that a lot better than I can. He's a little closer to the, to the gun than I am.
Counselor, our C A O, Schlang?
So what's, yeah, thank you. Um, what this is about is um, uh. Um, because you know, if there's vacant properties within, within the municipality, they're looking to bring in a tax on vacant properties.
How are vacant properties defined?
Um, basically, uh, nobody living in the property. So you could have. A situation where you have a rental property that is in currently being uh rented.
What about snowbirds?
Um, I would say, I would say no. That, well, 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 one of the, no, definitely not. Well, one of the biggest problems with this is trying to determine. Uh, from the municipality standpoint, which properties are vacant. It almost becomes almost impossible to, to determine that. Um. And uh, it, it's very difficult. It could be very expensive to uh. To try to determine and to enforce this. The administration of this would probably cost more than any revenues you'd actually receive from. receive from the program.
So is this, are we, is this being proposed, or is this actually happening, or what?
No, I think this is something that the city of St. Catharines has been trying to bring forward. And we've met on this, the treasurers with the region, and the lower tier treasurers are against this totally.
Yeah, it seems like, and then it, what if you're, so a landlord who-
Too comfortable sitting home.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
So it seems like that a landlord who is invested, like landlord is a business, right? And if, if the landlord loses a tenant, right, maybe because of the area that they're in, you know, and then we raise taxes on our business who doesn't, I find that it's, maybe it's well intended trying to force landlords to reduce their rents to get the, to make them more affordable, but I see problems enforcing it, and I, I don't fully understand what they're asking. So I'm not in favor of it, but I guess we just have to receive it.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Dunstall.
Thank you, your worship. When I saw this and I read it, I, I thought, I know at least three properties in Ward I don't know about the one still, but two, I think, are still vacant, and people have bought the properties purely for investment and have no interest in having anybody occupy them. And so with that being said, and what St. Catharines is saying, that when we're having people on a waiting list to get housing, and sometimes that can be a long time, we're letting people buy properties and leaving them vacant, that they should pay a little extra in tax. Now, having had the experience of owning a vacant property for a very short period of time, one has to pay a higher rate of insurance on an empty property. Insurance companies do not like vacant properties. And when I read this, I thought, wow, if we could work with the insurance company and they would notify us that a property is vacant, then we could add the tax without having to go through this cumbersome process of trying to figure out who, who has a vacant property and who hasn't. Because otherwise, it would, it would cost a fortune, and it wouldn't be worth adding the extra tax because we would have so much administrative overhead. But I just thought, wow, if you had the insurance company work with you, that would, that would end. What the idea is for St. Catharines is to discourage people from leaving their property, properties vacant, so that that would reduce the, the amount of stress on housing for people who can't find any. So I, in principle, I like the idea, but I don't think it's practical the way, the way they're gonna go about it. Anyway, just my thoughts.
Treasurer, Stephen, you have something to say? Your hand's still on there.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of almost opposite to what we're doing right now. Right now, municipalities are offering a rebate to properties that are the better vacant, which is slowly gonna be phased out. And now we're kind of flipping to the other, to the other extreme, where it would be, you'd be taxing properties that are vacant. Again, the enforcement of it would be, would be extremely difficult knowing which properties are actually vacant. And like I said, the revenue you'd receive would far, would be far less than, I think, the administrative cost.
Thank you, Stephen. Seeing no further comments, recorded vote, oh, Counselor Bothwell.
Oh, yay.
Counselor Dunstall.
It's a yay.
Counselor Frake.
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie.
Yay.
Counselor Sharp.
Yay.
Counselor Vane.
Yay.
Counselor Vardy. Okay, she's offline.
Yay.
And myself, it's a yay, and I don't even think I read the resolution, so I'll read it. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Vane. Resolve that the correspondence received from Niagara region with reference to the optional tax on vacant residential units, the preliminary overview of financial impact, the 2019 end of the year growth report, and the 2019 reserve water and wastewater treatment capabilities be received, and that's been carried.
Just point of order, you just sent, passed a motion for all of the correspondents and not just the item. So I think we were just passing a motion on the first item.
Yeah, it was, I guess it was written as a blanket resolution, so.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, other than I want to comment on one of the other pieces of course.
Sure. I'll read the net, the next one, item B, is Niagara region preliminary overview of financial Any comments on that? Niagara region, number C, or letter C, 2019 end of the year growth report. Any comments? No. Niagara region, 2019 reserve water and wastewater treatment capabilities. Counselor Bothwell, was it that one?
The, the city of Hamilton, it's a cannabis.
Oh, yeah, that's on, that's on a different resolution.
Thank you, then I'm all good.
Okay, so that one's been carried. Up next, we have item E, Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority Board of Directors Meeting Highlights. Any comments on that? Just need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Ritchie, Counselor Frake. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Frake. Resolve that the correspondence received from Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority with reference to the Board of Directors Meeting Highlights be received. And recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Hey.
Counselor Dunstall.
Yay.
Counselor Frake.
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie.
Yay.
Counselor Sharp.
Yay.
Counselor Vane.
Yay.
Counselor Vardy.
Yay.
Myself, it's a yay, so that is carried. Up next, we have item F, city of Hamilton requests to regulate and enforce odor and lighting nuisances related to the cultivation of cannabis plants. It's moved by Counselor Bothwell, just need a seconder, and then we'll open up discussion. Second by Counselor Dunstall. And Counselor Bothwell.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Jordan. Thank you for, I just wanted to, the request in this correspondence from the city of Hamilton was to endorse their motion. And it's what it is, it's in respect to odor and lighting nuisances related to the cultivation of cannabis plants. And this aligns with the correspondence that the region of Niagara sent as well to the Honorable Ernie Hardeman back in March 2020, after I attended the December Balls Falls Cannabis Workshop with the other municipalities in the region. So the city of Hamilton has been proactive in putting together and updating their public nuisance bylaw, and as well are now requesting that the, the province extend authority to municipalities to help and assist them with the toolkit to enforce those, those nuisances. So what I'd suggest is I put a motion forward together that the clerk has drafted that some resolve that the correspondence be related to the request to regulate and enforce odor and lighting nuisances related to cultivation could be received, and that furthermore, that the council, the town of Grinsby endorses the city of Hamilton's resolution to request that the province extend authority to municipalities to enforce odor and lighting nuisance complaints stemming from licensed and unlicensed cannabis cultivations within its jurisdictions. So I'm hopeful to get support for that endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Any discussion? Counselor Vane?
My only concern, I fully support what Counselor Bothwell's saying, my only concern is if this is a provincial jurisdiction, then it would have to require the province to pass the law to pass that jurisdiction off to all municipalities. I'm just wondering if that's a possibility, that's all.
So I can, Mayor Jordan, so we have, one of the tools that came out of the discussion at the region was the ability to amend our public nuisance bylaw, and we have bylaw number 1121. It's very similar to the city of Hamilton's, and that's basically what they did, was they amended their public nuisance bylaw, which we are permitted to do under the municipal act. And they put in language in there that defines odor and lighting to some extent and puts in the ability to treat it as a public nuisance. So they've already passed that public nuisance update to their bylaw, and so what they're now doing is asking the province to furthermore assist with the enforcement of that. So I think it's, it's new territory, and that came out at the conversation with the region as well, is that municipalities are looking at every tool in their tool belt to try to be proactive in resolving complaints that might arise out of, not necessarily the licensed grow ops, but the, the designated growers who can grow up to maybe 5,000 plants for, for different parties. And they can do that in a property that does not require odor or lighting controls at all. So this is a way that city of Hamilton is looking at navigating that and attempting to put a toolkit in place. And all I'm doing is asking that we support their initiative on that, and that when we look at developing our cannabis guidelines, which are almost completed now and going to be put to an open house very shortly, as soon as we're able to do that, one of the things that I brought up for, for consideration for us as well is to amend our public nuisance bylaw accordingly. So this just aligns with what a lot of the other municipalities are looking at doing as well. When I was at Lincoln, they also were talking about this, as well as doing licensing and permits. So municipalities are looking at ways to just put language into their, their bylaws and their zoning bylaws, and this is just, at this point, all I'm asking is that we endorse the Hamilton's letter to the province, and that it reinforces the letter, again, like I said, that the region sent to the province, asking to provide guidelines and clarification on standards and thresholds for odor and lighting emissions. So it's just aligning with the same messaging that the region is sending, and I'm just asking for the support of council to that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll read the resolution. Moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that the correspondence from the city of Hamilton related to the request to regulate and enforce odor and lighting nuisances related to the cultivation of cannabis plants be received, and furthermore, that the council of the town of Grinsby endorses city of Hamilton's resolution to request that the province extend authority to municipalities to enforce odor and lighting nuisance complaints stemming from licensed and unlicensed cannabis cultivations within its jurisdiction. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall.
It's a yay.
Counselor Frake.
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie.
Yay.
Counselor Sharp is a yay. Counselor Vane.
Yay.
Counselor Vardy.
Yay.
Myself, it's a yay, so that is carried. Up next, we have correspondence, letter to the Ministry of Transportation regarding Get a mover and a seconder for that, and then Counselor Cadwell, I have you as a mover already. Counselor Ritchie, I'll have you as a seconder. Any Counselor Cadwell, you'd like to speak on it?
Yes, I would, Mayor Jordan, and thank you very much. I wanna, I sent you an email on Thursday, but again, just to reiterate, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to, to sign this letter of thanking the minister, Minister Mulrooney, her, her, her great people at the Ministry of Transportation there for getting this Grinsby Diamond done, completed. It was a four and a half year venture that, again, I want to thank, I want to thank staff, I want to thank council, I want to thank Mr. Sam Osterhoff for the hard work he did for getting these red flashing beacon lights at every intersection, at the five of six intersections at the Grinsby Diamond. So again, thank you very much to, to one and all, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Cadwell, for your dedication and your perseverance to get that finally done after four hard years. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Ritchie. Resolve that the correspondence sent to the Ministry of Transportation regarding the Grinsby Diamond be received. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall.
It's a yay.
Counselor Frake.
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie.
Yay.
Counselor Sharp.
Yay.
Counselor Vardy.
Yay.
Sorry, Counselor Vane.
Yay.
And myself, it's a yay, so that is carried. And up next, before we get to new business, we have notice of motion. I acknowledge that the notice of motion will be given consideration at the next council meeting. We have a notice of motion moved by Counselor Bothwell. Whereas on April 3, 2020, the region of Niagara filed the draft final Livingston Avenue Extension Environmental Study Report, ESR, with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, MECP. And whereas the region has indicated the period of review by the MECP is expected to be 30 days from the filing date, and whereas the region has indicated the intent that following the MECP review of the, of, and the addressing of any associated comments, the ESR will be filed with a notice of study completion. And whereas upon filing, there will be a 45-day public review and commenting period in regards to the final ESR document and associated background study documents. And whereas the council of the town of Grinsby does not support the Livingston Avenue Extension through the Irish Grove Woodlot, and has communicated this position to the region of Niagara, therefore be it resolved that council for the town of Grinsby directs legal councils be engaged to prepare an appropriate response to the region of Niagara's notice of study completion once filed, including the preparation of a part two order and this documentation to be submitted to the appropriate authorities within the prescribed timelines.
Point of inquiry?
Counselor Sharp.
Where can I read this?
Yeah, it'll be published in the minutes. Yeah, it'll be published both in the minutes and the, in the previous, or the next, the May 19 agenda.
Thank you.
And we have a second notice of motion moved by Counselor Vardy.
Mayor, can I, can I, I was hopeful that I can ask to suspend the rules and get a two-third vote to discuss this motion tonight, because it's very time sensitive.
Do you want to prepare that? Yeah, the clerk will prepare that right now.
Thank you.
Can you read it again?
Sure, I'll read it while the clerk is preparing it. Do you have it over there? Yeah, I think you have it. All right. Notice of motion moved by Counselor Bothwell. Whereas on April 3, 2020, the region of Niagara filed the draft final Livingston Avenue Extension Environmental Study Report, ESR, with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks- ESR, with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, MECP. And whereas the region has indicated the period of review by the MECP is expected to be 30 days from the filing date, and whereas the region has indicated the intent, the intent that following the MECP review and the addressing of any associated comments, the ESR will be filed with a notice of study completion. And whereas upon filing, there will be a 45-day public review and commenting period in regards to the final ESR document and associated background study documents. And whereas the Town of Grinsby does not support the Livingston Avenue Extension through the Irish Grove Woodlot and has communicated this position to the region of Niagara, therefore be it resolved, council for the Town of Grinsby directs legal council to be engaged to prepare an appropriate response to the region of Niagara's notice of study completion once filed, including the preparation of a Part II order and this documentation be submitted to the appropriate authorities within the prescribed timelines. So we have the motion to suspend. We have Counselor Bothwell as a mover. We need a seconder. Counselor Frake? Moved by Counselor Bothwell, seconded by Counselor Frake. Resolve that the rules of procedures be suspended in regards to, is it S520 of bylaw 0781, to govern the proceedings of council, local board, and committee meetings to consider the Livingston Avenue Extension Environmental Study Report filing. And recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell.
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall.
Yay.
Counselor Frake.
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yay, confused.
This is just a motion to suspend. Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
And myself, I'm a yay. So the proceedings are suspended, so now we can, we're open to discussion.
Do you want me to give you a bit of review on why the motion's put forward?
Absolutely, Counselor Bothwell.
So I've been in correspondence with Carolyn Ryle since the last pick that we had, and I've been following up with her as to the status of the completion of the Livingston Avenue Extension, ESR, and received notice, and I can give you the date in an email, that just this past week, that in fact, the draft final ESR had been filed, has been filed with the ministry April 3, and that her understanding is that the MECP reviews it within 30 days, which would be May 3. Today is May 4, so the potential is that the MECP could, at any time, provide their comments back to the region, and if any comments result in any type of, they have to address them, then they would do that within their ESR. And then she was anticipating to file the notice of study completion to the public with the background study reports, which would only give the public, as well as the town, a 45-day window in which to respond to that notice of completion. So the potential is that should the MECP respond very quickly, which is possible, that could happen this week, and the notice of study completion could be posted at any time, meaning that we have a very short window, 45 days, in which to prepare any type of a response to the recommendations within that report. The indications from the last pick were that the recommendations are that the Livingston Avenue Extension go through, and that was made very clear in that pick. So we're expecting that will be what the final recommendations will be in the report. So this motion is to, just to start the process of gathering the information required in order to provide a response, and as Ms. Ryle mentioned, a number of stakeholder meetings that if we're not happy with the ESR, that we can file a Part II order. So appropriately, that would be a step I see council taking. And the only thing that I would suggest is that a Part II order does, what it does is it essentially escalates a municipal class environmental assessment, which is what this was, which is an expedited assessment. It escalates it to an individual assessment. There's some restrictions about what a Part II order can and can't do, but what it does is it moves it into, the potential is that it could move it into a different class of environmental assessment, requiring some different studies and a different, more involved process. So in order to file a Part II order, the parties that file it have to provide a substantial amount of information as to the process to date and how it has transpired from the time the, the study started to where we are today. So there's quite a bit of history that goes back with the filing of this environmental, the Livingston Avenue Extension background documents, and I would suggest that to assist the legal team on preparing that, considering that I've attended all of the picks, plus the stakeholder meetings, plus a number, received a number of other pieces of correspondence with regards to this extension, that I can provide some support to the legal team in the preparation of that, which will alleviate a lot of the costs that, you know, we're thinking, is this going to cost a lot of money? I'm hopeful that we can provide, or I can provide a lot of the background documents to assist in the preparation of that, and would ask if council would support some involvement at that point with legal to give that information to them. So this is, because it's so time sensitive, I'm hopeful that council will see that, again, it's framing the appropriate response within a very short period of time. If we're able to get this to council, if Emmy, I've, sorry, I've also been in correspondence with MECP to ask them if they're in receipt of the draft final report. I have not received a response back from them. I've also asked them if they are suspending the statutory timelines on review, because part of my, I did implore the region to, if there was a way to postpone the filing, if that was possible, and they continued to stand firm that they wanted to make these timelines. So there is a potential that the MECP could come back and say that they're suspending their, or delaying their review of this file, in which case we have more time, but that also, we start the ball rolling now. That gives us a little bit more of a breathing room to prepare a more appropriate response. But I think we have to have this in place, in the inevitability that they get their response back today or this week, and immediately post a notice of completion. So hopefully, I can get the support of council to start this ball rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Vane?
I have also attended a lot of these meetings too, and I have always found, even though we have challenged them on every single level, they have always stated that they intend to go ahead with this. The province has given their support. They've said it's partly because of the go train station. So I'm just concerned that everything we talk about these days is, let's spend money on lawyers and consultants and this, but we got to save money. We got to cut the budget. You know, like, it's just, we can't have it both ways. If I thought we had a chance at winning this, I would full-heartedly support Counselor Bothwell's motion, but I have not seen anything from the region or the province, actually quite the contrary, that they will change their minds. They've made it quite clear that if the go station comes in, we need this so they can access the parking lot, and so on and so forth, and they've said from day one, they're not going to change. So I'm just concerned about spending thousands of dollars on a lawyer and not getting anything for it. So that's just my thoughts. Not that I support, listen, I am fully against the Livingston Extension. I just don't think, I think we'd be throwing good money after bad, trying to fight something that they've already said they're going to do, both the province and the region. So that's my thought.
Counselor Sharp?
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. So to some extent, I agree with Counselor Vane, but this Livingston Extension is going to be, we've been fighting this for a long time, and it's a good cause, and it's in my ward. It's like I have, I'm compelled by the people that live there to stand up for this. I know it will cost us some money, and this is part of the things that it costs around town, but I'm wondering if staff could give some, some idea of how much this might cost.
Walter, or Harry, whoever wants to comment?
Yeah, I mean, some of the Part II orders that I've been through, I wouldn't have, it would be on, it's late at night, and I think it'd be unfair for me to give you a cost that I wouldn't know. I think if this goes forward, I would have liked a notice of motion, then we could have got some estimates for you, but I would say anytime you have to do a thorough review like this, it would be at least, it could be a range of 10 to 20K. And, you know, that's just a rough ball estimate, Counselor.
Thank you, CAO. Counselor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too understand the importance of the woodlot, but is it, you know, I guess I'm going to look a little foolish here in this comment, but we don't know what the report actually says yet. So I understand getting ready, but it's kind of like saying that, you know, we've already, we've assumed now this is what's going to happen to move forward. So I just, I don't know if it's just, you know, if this motion, like, this motion to me is like basically saying, we don't trust the regional staff. I, you know, I'd like to hear maybe from Regional Counselor Furtick, if he knows anything about this, what, if he's heading inside, if he knows anything on the inside, maybe, and even if he does, he probably can't comment on it, but what, just what his thoughts are about doing something like this, if that's all right with him.
Counselor Furtick, it's totally up to you if you want to weigh in.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. Through to Counselor Bothwell and Counselor Ritchie. Listen, the region is the one that's going to have to fork the $20 million in order to put the extension up. And if the Part II order doesn't go through, and you can't stop it that way, the only other way that I know that you can stop it is to continue to have the mayor and the regional councillor oppose the budget when it comes forward to build the roads. So as long as you can stall that, and I'm sure you can stall it for at least the next 10 years, that nothing's, nothing could happen, because the region has to approve the budget. So I'm sure Mayor Jordan and myself could work up enough people in order to stop the budget from going through. That's the other way to stop it. I don't, I don't agree that we should be building this road through the woodlot. I mean, nobody wants it to go through the woodlot, but let's also understand on the other side too, this is private property. If those people are to sell that property, and somebody wants to use the woodlot for whatever reason, what legal means do you have to stop them? None. Zero. It's not your property. It's their property. But, but I'm not saying that this could happen, only because I think that it could, because I was sitting, I was sitting beside the girl that owned the property, her and her mother. So I'm getting it from both sides, and I'm being quite honest with you in saying that I do support Counselor Bothwell, but on the other token, we, Mayor Jordan and myself, as long as we're on council, we will completely oppose the building of that road. And it's a budget issue. It's going to cost $20 million to do it. And don't forget, when we come up, when the region comes up with their 20 million, the municipality is going to have to come up with two or three million. So as long as you keep saying no, won't get built. Anyway, that's, that's the other side of the coin. That's the best I can do and help you. Thanks for letting me do that, Mayor.
Thank you for your insight, Counselor Furtick. Again, I'm happy to represent our constituents' views at the region and fighting for the woodlot and fighting against the region to build a, building a road that is really a road to nowhere. The traffic patterns, we certainly saw at the PIC that traffic patterns could easily be sustained along the service roads and Highway 8. Counselor Bothwell?
I'm just a little worried that we have to do, in my mind, we need to do everything we possibly can at this point to send that message, as in a strong message, that of where the town stands, and apart, they basically waved that at us and say, if you don't want it, do a Part II order. So if I don't get support for a Part II order from council, I will probably do it as an individual citizen, myself. So that's fine. I just, I just think somebody needs to do it, and I'm hopeful that I'll get council support. I really believe, this is what they said, that this was the recommended road. So when you say, you know, is this going to be it, this is what they told us at the last pick. Yes, this is our preferred route. So if we don't, if we wait, or we say, you know, whatever, we're past the next council meeting, and we're not going to be making any decisions. So it's, we can sit on it, and we are. We're waiting for that notice, notice of motion, notice of completion to come, which is the 45-day window. The other problem we have is, we have a great mayor, we have a great regional councillor. You guys are going to go to bat for us no matter what, but if, for whatever terrible reason, we don't have you around, who's to say the next guys are going to protect our woodlot and not put the road through? So everything we can do, we've got to do now, and we've got to make sure that we have, that we're just, that's just my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bothwell. Counselor Cadwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan. I guess unfortunately, this is coming to us tonight. Didn't get any other information to it, but I guess it's about the sense of urgency, and I'm listening to Counselor Furtick and yourself with your commitments to saving the woodlot. The woodlot is still, it's part of the green belt, which I believe, and I'm 100% sure on that one. So, yeah, again, it's sense of urgency, and, yeah, I'm a little bit confused, I'll say that. But I do obviously, and I have been since day one, support the woodlot too, but, yeah. Yeah, this is a tough one, but again, I'm totally supporting the woodlot, so, thank you.
Counselor Vane?
I just want to clarify that what Counselor Furtick just said was that if you and he oppose this, that will stop it. Is that correct? Because I'm just concerned that every time we turn around, we're throwing money at lawyers and consultants, and then we can't turn around and complain about the budget. So I just want to confirm what Counselor Furtick said, that if I'm comfortable, if he says that he feels that you two can stop it by opposing it, then I'm comfortable with that.
I'll talk first, and if Counselor Furtick wants to talk later, that's fine. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll talk first and if Counselor Furtick wants to talk, uh, later, that's fine. Uh, I strongly believe that, that, uh, time is of the essence and the part two order is the correct way to go about this. By, uh, doing things properly, um, with the part two order, uh, this is the way to protect us right from the start and, uh, we're not looking at, I know we're, we're talking about, uh, uh, ten thousand dollars here, but, uh, uh, certainly, um, holding the region to their standards and, and, uh, and, and, uh, forcing them to, uh, um, to follow what the constituents of Ward Four and of Grimsby want. Uh, I think the part two order is definitely the way to proceed. So Counselor Furtick, if you want to add to that, uh, you're welcome to.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Jordan. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of part two order, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying that if that part two order doesn't go through, that there is an alternative and that alternative is through the budget. And, and as I say, um, municipalities be well aware that you're going to have to cough up two or three million dollars as well as the, the region. And I believe they came up with twenty million dollars that to build it. And as long as we keep opposing that, it won't get built. So, um, it's up to you, it's up to council to, to you and your council to decide with, to, to spend the money. Um, I'm going to have to, uh, sign off here pretty soon. My battery is coming out of juice again. So, anyway. Uh, it's your decision.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Furtick. Counselor Sharp?
Let's have one other comment, Mayor Jordan. Um, I think that there is some some value in what, uh, Counselor Furtick says and, um, so if this is going to cost twenty million, I, I think it was ten million that they had budgeted before, but, but maybe it's gone to, to a twenty million dollar project. So there's only so much money at the region and they, every municipality is vying for, for a certain amount of money from their transportation or roads, master plan budget. And so if we have both our mayor and regional counselor, sitting on regional council, saying no, we don't want that money, right? Then I, I could see that there would be other municipalities who would agree to say we want the money and, and they'll bring it to, to where, to what they want. And if we're, if we're not interested in it. So I don't know, but if Counselor Bothwell has a good point, that if this gets, the environmental assessment gets put through and then approved and then the preferred way is there and then we're talking fifteen years from now, maybe, that the new council in Grimsby and the region says we have a plan to build whatever in that area, then, um, those old plans get grandfathered in and they, it's like, if we don't do something now, maybe we won't have anything left to do a decade from now. So I'll, I'll vote in favor.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Counselor Vardy?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to, uh, uh, add that, uh, we have opposed this all the way along. Uh, our regional counselor and our mayor have always voiced their opposition to it. And here we are. So if they're saying now you need a point two order, then I think that's the way we should go. Um, because no matter how many protestations we've had, uh, since this was first conceived. Um, we've not really gotten much traction. So, um, I'm inclined to do everything that we that we can formally to put a stop to this.
Thank you, Counselor Vardy. Seeing no further questions, uh, I have a mover as Counselor Bothwell and he's a seconder. Counselor Frake? Moved by Counselor Bothwell, second by Counselor Frake. Whereas on April third, twenty twenty, the region in Niagara filed the draft final Livingston Avenue Extension Environmental Study Report with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, M E C P. And whereas the region has indicated the period of review by the M E C P is expected thirty days from the filing date. And whereas the region has indicated the intent that following the M E C P review and addressing any associated comments, the E S R will be filed with a notice of study completion. And whereas upon that filing, there will be a forty five day public review and commenting period in regards with the final E S R document and associated background study documents. And whereas the council of the town of Grimsby does not support the Livingston Avenue extension through the Irish Grove Woodlot and has communicated this position to the region of Niagara. Therefore, be it resolved that council of, of the town of Grimsby directs legal counsel to be engaged to prepare an appropriate response to the region of Niagara notice of study completion once filed, including the preparation of a part two order. And this documentation be submitted to the appropriate authorities within the prescribed timeline. And that is as a resolution to be passed. Uh, recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay, so that is carried. Our second notice of motion, uh, moved by Counselor Vardy. Whereas the World Health Organization declared a global COVID nineteen pandemic on March eleventh, twenty twenty and is continuing until further notice. Whereas the province of Ontario declared a state of emergency on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, which is continuing until further notice with some estimates until at least July twenty twenty. Whereas the province of Ontario on March twenty fourth, twenty twenty declared that all non-essential businesses be closed until further notice. Whereas many local businesses may face financial hardships as a result of these closures, which may impact their viability in return. And in return will reduce commercial tax revenue to the town of Grimsby. Whereas many residents, Grimsby residents will be negatively financially impacted by these measures, including reduced income and job losses. Whereas the town of Grimsby revenues will be negatively impacted by parks, recreation and cultural closures. Whereas the financial impacts of these measures on residents may negatively affect the town of Grimsby revenues even after these emergency measures have been lifted. Be it resolved that the town of Grimsby reopen its budget in order to find savings which may offset reduced revenues in light of current pandemic impacts. All right, we need a mover and seconder for the bylaws. Moved by, uh, Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaws number twenty dash forty one to twenty dash forty four and twenty dash forty seven inclusive and the same be read a first time. Recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell?
Uh, I just have a point of order. Uh, should we not be removing bylaw, uh, twenty forty four, the site alteration bylaw because we deferred it?
Yes, you're correct. So that's, what number was that one? Okay. All right. So I'll read that again. Moved by Counselor Ritchie, second by Counselor Dunstall. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaws number twenty dash forty one to twenty dash forty three and twenty forty seven inclusive and the same be read a first time. Uh, recorded vote, Counselor Bothwell. Thank you for that.
Yay.
Counselor Dunstall?
Yay.
Counselor Frake?
Yay.
Counselor Cadwell?
Yay.
Counselor Ritchie?
Yay.
Counselor Sharp? Counselor Sharp?
Yay.
Counselor Vane?
Yay.
Counselor Vardy? Counselor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay, so that's carried. Oh, yes, is, uh, any new business?
I have some new business.
Counselor Sharp?
Uh, a couple of things. Um, first, I just bear with me, it's almost eleven at night, but, um, Mayor Jordan, I think, said that we collected fifteen thousand kilograms of food through the Feed Hope Drive.
I, I believe, I believe that's what we, the latest numbers, it may be more, um, yes.
Well, that's like fifteen tons. So this is great news. Thanks. Uh, what I was looking at was that Ford F one fifty weighs about eighteen hundred to twenty two hundred kilograms. That, that means we collected enough food to, like, it's the, the weight of like seven and a half Ford F one fifty trucks. That, that's a lot of food to collect. And, um, I was there and we, we brought five pickup truck loads full of food into the G B F just from our neighborhood and, uh, I know there was like many others, so that, that's great. This is, I, I don't know how they're going to, you can't give it away, right? They'll have to share it with other food banks. But I'm sure that's great. The other thing I wanted to talk about.
I believe it was, um, over a five month supply, so it's a really amazing accomplishment by the town of Grimsby.
Yeah, that, that's, that's awesome. And, uh, I could tell, I posted a video, like, there was a lot. And, but fifteen thousand pounds, that's a lot of food. Um, so thank you to everyone who donated and thank you to everybody who helped us go out and pick it up. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, um, the, uh, oh yeah, the Kerma Avenue Car Wash. I was out there the other day washing my car and, um, one of the things, they have free air, so, uh, your tires, they lose a little bit of air in the, during the winter from the temperature change. And they have a free air pump there, you just pull up, fill up your tires and, uh, wash your car while you're there. They also have a, um, a disinfectant for you to wash the interior of your car. It's like a dollar fifty, but you, um, spread it down with like seventy five percent isopropyl. It kills anything that might be on the interior of your car. So anyways, uh, the Kerma Car Wash is a great spot. And, um, you know, I've been doing a lot of gardening. I, I do some in my backyard and, um, I know there's some garden centers that are open. And, uh, I know T S C is a spot where I've been getting some seeds and some vegetable garden type stuff. They've been open because they sell, um, animal feed. So you can go there and you can get tons of gardening stuff. And, um, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Sharp. Uh, Counselor Vardy?
Yes, I, um, I promised a few constituents that I would, uh, that I would raise this. Um, the social distancing bylaw that, that was put on the agenda and then removed um, caused serious concern for, for residents and, uh, I received many emails and I, I have a question for our C A O. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I have a question through our C A O.
Yeah, I don't think it, um, discussing this, uh, since it was moved, removed from the bylaw. Uh, I think you need to take your discussions outside of the meeting, uh, right now because, uh, we can't really comment on it, uh, because it, it was, uh, lifted and removed from the agenda.
Well, I think residents still have serious concerns. And then let me just say that in future, uh, I would ask our C A O to exercise greater scrutiny of what gets put on the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Vardy. Uh, Counselor Frake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick one again. Uh, this is for, uh, our C A O or maybe Wayne, uh, Counselor Furtick. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, last month, uh, the Niagara Region Economic Rapid, uh, Response Team did a survey of businesses in the region. Uh, one part of that survey is still outstanding, I believe, and that's the the names of the companies and some of their comments that, as it relates to each municipality. I believe it was a hundred and sixty three Grimsby companies. I'm just wondering when that, when that part of the survey will be released and when we can see it. Uh, because I, I, I'm personally quite interested in seeing what our companies in Grimsby had, had to say and which ones are really concerned and which ones aren't for that matter. Uh, so that's a question to either the C A O and or Wayne because it's Niagara region related. Thank you.
Uh, C A O?
Uh, at this point, they, they still needed permission to release the names externally. They, they haven't been able to do that yet. Uh, we just done the call today with Kelly at the region, so we'll continue to follow up on that, um, Counselor Frake, to see if, what companies choose to release their names publicly. That answered the survey. It's a privacy thing, so they have to provide permission to release those names.
Thank you, C A O.
And I did want to respond to Counselor, uh, Counselor Vardy. That was a team decision, um, at the E O C approved by the mayor to bring the bylaw forward. When we got the new information on the Friday, we, on the, from the province, we realized the actual, um, it was just a last resort that we were trying to use in case that there'd be some problems with the good weather. But it was an entire team decision and we felt I didn't want to use my, um, my authority through the emergence, you know, the authority, the delegated authority you gave me. So we, we thought we'd bring the bylaw to council for review, but it was no intent by any of us at the E O C, um, you know, an attempt to try and, um, hurt the residents. We just wanted another last resort tool that we could use in case there was some problems. We've done a great job as an E O C. We haven't laid one ticket. But we were just concerned that as the weather got better, that we needed some additional tools that were being used across the, the province. Thank you.
And I'll, for, I'll further, certainly further comment on that as well because, uh, the Pelham's bylaw. Uh, when we talked about it, we talked about it at sight unseen and as soon as I was able to finally read the bylaw. Uh, that's when I, um, realized that, um, some of the, uh, privacy issues on, on it were definitely overreaching and I felt very uncomfortable, uh, moving it forward. So that's why we, uh, made the decision to, to get it off the agenda. Um, and notwithstanding the fact that, um, uh, social distancing measures and, uh, the province opening up, uh, things with this, uh, COVID nineteen pandemic. None of us have ever seen anything like this before and, um, there isn't a playbook or rulebook to be written on this. And so, sure, could we have, uh, vetted the bylaw more? Absolutely. Uh, did we, uh, see that we had made a mistake and it probably went too far with, uh, or definitely went too far with, uh, privacy issues? Uh, yes, we took it off of the, uh, agenda immediately because, uh, we saw that, that, uh, it certainly, when I was able to read it fully and, um, and, uh, go through it completely, I saw that it was far overreaching in my opinion. I originally wanted the bylaw for, um, repeat offenders, especially as, as innocuous as that may sound, uh, is fishermen who are, were ripping down signs and, uh, continuously, uh, disobeying, uh, the bylaw, um, or sorry, the, um, distancing, uh, provisions and, uh, we felt that, uh, the eight hundred and eighty dollar fine, uh, would probably be too excessive. Uh, so we were looking at something like a two hundred and fifty dollar fine that we could actually, uh, with a repeat offenders. Uh, it would be something that, that, uh, would be more reasonable. So, um, as it says, uh, everything was changed from back on Thursday. So this is why, um, things changed. For a number of reasons. So, uh, I stand by, uh, putting it on even though it was, uh, premature and I stand by removing it. and I stand by removing it immediately as well. Councillor Bane?
Mr. Mayor, can I just follow up? Cause the CAO was responding to me that, uh, in future, I think anything put on the agenda should be thoroughly reviewed before it goes on the agenda. And then we can avoid this kind of embarrassment. That, that bylaw was unconstitutional and it should never have seen the light of day.
Well, uh, having, uh, seen that, uh, it is passed in Pelham, it's passed in Hamilton and it's passed in Branford. So, uh, not everyone does feel it that way. Uh, I felt the way I did and it got it taken off the agenda and I, I feel okay with that. And, uh, it's good to see that we, uh, um, have, uh, very sober second thought. And, uh, we did what was right at the end of the day. Uh, councillor Bane?
Yeah, I just, I was gonna add some things on COVID in general, but just since we're on this particular topic. Um, you know, I, I understand what people were saying and, and, but the one comment that I found very disturbing from every single person, I got about a dozen or fifteen or whatever, emails and stuff and, but everybody said most people in Grimsby are okay. So nobody said that everybody's following the rules. So if we lose somebody that close to us that dies because of this, because of some fool who can't follow simple rules, as you yourself said, Mr. Mayor, about the fishermen. I'm an avid fisherman, I love to fish, but I'm following the rules. And if somebody close to me or somebody close to you dies because somebody didn't follow the rules, then you know what? I have no sympathy for people who get hit for being repeat offenders, none whatsoever. If you cannot respect the lives of other people, then that is your problem and you should pay for it heavily. Now you look at our long-term care homes where a lot of the deaths have occurred. In case anybody's not aware, people in long-term care homes do not leave the home. So obviously somebody brought it in. Anyways, having said that, I have a couple of interesting facts that I want to show people because as, as we all know, there is repeat offenders out there and I see them all the time. Uh, Russia on Sunday declared ten thousand new cases in one day. Four hundred deaths in one day. They've done four million tests and they figure one in fifty people over there are carrying the disease. Ontario still can't do thirteen thousand tests in a day. And yet we still see numbers of three, four hundred, five hundred a day. They, we have currently four hundred and thirty-four new cases on Sunday with forty deaths. These are actual people that are dying. This is not just some number that we're just pulling out of the air. I, I sent out a text message or, sorry, a Facebook thing today. It would show to Burnley Warehouse. And it was really well said, the way the person had done it. They had put in this thing, they said, this has, um, this fire has now run out of the fuel. Uh, it's not moving anymore, it's flattened the curve. Okay, everybody can head back inside. The point behind it was that we've got to take this seriously. Just because the curve is flattening doesn't mean the disease has gone away. It has not. And people still continue to be ignorant to the fact that other people are dying. I'm not willing to sacrifice a single life because of somebody else. So while I'm not in support of the way the bylaw was written, I do think it was kind of harsh. And I am a law enforcement person, as are by law enforcement officers. They are law enforcement officers. They're not just simple, you know, people appointed by the town as some people have tried to imply. So you know what? If we don't take this serious, people, we are going to end up with very serious rules. I'm very surprised, at one point, the prime minister there, I thought was gonna impose martial law. If you think that it's not gonna happen, just go back to nineteen nineteen. With the Spanish Flu, the first wave killed two million people. The second wave killed fifty million. So I, I don't know how else to tell you this more seriously. If you don't want to take it serious, then that's your problem and I think you should pay for it. That's my opinion on the matter.
Thank you councillor Bane. Uh, if councillor Ritchie's the last one, you have, uh, four minutes or I have to extend. Councillor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I first wanted to just, uh, congratulate you for recognizing that bylaw and removing it from the, uh, the agenda. Uh, that being said, though, I am kind of offended that, uh, that we're attacking our CEO for making that, or, you know, we're attacking our CEO when we were clearly stated that, uh, that the EOC made that decision. It was not his, it was not that he made it and put it on the agenda. And this council procedural training manual here also says that the agenda, the agenda is set by the mayor. So I'm kind of offended that, uh, that we put the blame on our CEO. Um, I really, uh, congratulate the mayor. He stood up and, uh, corrected the issue as you would. But I, I'm offended that, uh, that we're attacking our CEO in this matter.
Thank you councillor Ritchie. I need a mover and secondar for the, uh, councillor Cadwell, new business. Uh, first, we're going to, uh, put the motion forward to extend, uh, moved by councillor Cadwell. Second by councillor Ritchie. Resolve that council waive the rules of procedures to go past the eleven PM curfew. Um, recorded councillor Bothwell?
Yay.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yay.
Councillor Frake?
Yay.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yay.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Councillor Bane?
Yay.
Councillor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, yay, so that's extended. Councillor Cadwell, new business?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have, uh, just three items. I want to, uh, first talk about, uh, Grimsby Power, we had a hydro board meeting on April twenty-ninth at eleven o'clock. And, uh, councillor, uh, Sharp and myself will be putting together a summary report for all members of council to, uh, to, to give you, uh, input from the meeting. So, uh, it was a very good meeting, uh, talked about a lot of, uh, a lot of items. So we will be giving a summary, will be coming, uh, forward. Also, uh, just want to mention that GDAC is doing some great work with the, uh, local businesses. Uh, many, many of the members are calling businesses. Uh, actually, we're doing about twenty businesses per week. So again, that was initiated by our, uh, our wonderful secretary, uh, Nancy Simon. She's doing a, just a great job and the members are stepping right up to assist too. So which is, uh, really happy to say. And just a quick, uh, summary, a quick overview. Uh, GDAC started with the business incubators update. Uh, again, there's been some movement. Uh, Susan Manuel, the chair, has had a meeting with the, with the members of the committee. And just with the COVID nineteen environment, the focus has slowed down for the project group to adjust their lives accordingly. They will be continued to move forward, but at a pace that is also aligns with the new normal. So anyways, things are in the works there. And I just want to, uh, last thing is, uh, say, uh, a huge shout out because this week, uh, May third to May ninth is Professional Municipal Clerks Week. I want to give a big shout out to, uh, to Sarah and to, uh, Devon, our, our town clerk. So, uh, yeah, thank you.
I'll second that. Councillor Bothwell?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Jordan. I just, um, so I'm hearing from councillor Cadwell that GDAC is very active out in the community and that's great. It's just, um, I'm hoping to see our other committees getting that, um, same ability to do that because Grimsby Green is really excited to, to get some initiatives off the ground. And, uh, GDAC is an advisory committee as well, Grimsby Green and the Heritage Advisory Committee. So, um, you know, I'd like to say if we're, if one committee is being able to be very active, I think we need to look at ways that we can get our other committees back up and running. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bothwell. I, I agree with that as well. Now we, that seems to be the end of new business. Uh, now we need a mover and secondar for the second, third reading. Moved by councillor Bane, second by councillor Ritchie. Moved by councillor Bane, second by councillor Ritchie. Resolve that leave be given to introduce bylaws number twenty dash forty-one to twenty dash forty-three and twenty forty-seven inclusive, read a first time, now be read a second and third time and finally passed. And the mayor and town clerk do seal the same and rule of country, do sign and seal the same and rule of councils of the contrary notwithstanding. Uh, recorded vote councillor Bothwell?
Yay.
Councillor Dunstall?
Yay.
Councillor Frake?
Yay.
Councillor Cadwell?
Yay.
Councillor Ritchie?
Yay.
Councillor Sharp?
Yay.
Councillor Bane?
Yay.
Councillor Vardy?
Yay.
Myself, I'm a yay, uh, that's carried and meeting is adjourned. Oh, sorry, the next meeting is Tuesday, May nineteenth, seven PM. And I think it will still be virtual. Thank you and good night. Meeting is adjourned.